All right, I'm opening the meeting tonight at 6:30 PM. The meeting is being recorded. All select board members are present in person. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we have a packed agenda tonight. Any of the items that require speaking, we're gonna be limiting it just because there's just so much going on. We have a bunch of public meetings. We have a planning board meeting tonight as well, so we're gonna do our best to move things along. If we get to the end of like the available time, we're just going to continue. And so I apologize in advance, but a lot of timely things have fallen on tonight's agenda. All right, so community events and announcements, number two. We have road paving going on on Gaskell and Thornton Street, and you have some updates?
Yeah, so we have a public schedule. Sure, reclamation vendor has changed around a couple of times on us, so it's ongoing. Gaskell probably finishing the reclamation work tomorrow, paving it next week. So the day that we're scheduled to be closed, not yet confirmed with their paving vendor, but Gaskell will be closed for a day next week. Thornton, we're going to complete the reclamation work Friday or Saturday morning, depending on how Friday goes, and then we're scheduled on the 23rd to be paving Thornton Street.
Yeah, so by the end of October.
Yeah, well, both.
Excellent, thank you. And number three, citizen statements and petitions. Is there anybody online or in the room who would like to address the select board? Why don't you come on up and tell us your name?
My name's Joanna Lamont, 17th Street Drive. As we all know, next year marks the 250th anniversary of the independence, with the Declaration of Independence being 250 years old as of August 2nd. That's when it was officially signed. Mendon played a key role in that. Joseph Dorr helped chair a committee and prepare the 19 articles of resolutions that played a key factor in the Declaration of Independence. I would like to see, or I think I'd like to see Mendon entertain a mock signing of the Declaration of Independence on August 2nd. I'm bringing this-
Twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six. I'm bringing this to the board so you guys can think it over, contemplate it, but I think it would be great, since we did play a major role in that.
And we have a copy downstairs.
We have a copy downstairs. We also have articles of resolutions downstairs, so we could key that in with many things to do.
I think that's an excellent idea. That's one of our better citizen statements and petitions. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else want to be heard? All right, so we have a couple of minutes. I'm gonna skip down to the minutes, where our couple of minutes, which is number 11. If everybody's had the chance to review September 3rd and September 17th, I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I'm making motion to approve the minutes from the 3rd and the 6th-
Seventeenth, 2025.
Twenty-twenty-five, second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Motion passes, minutes accepted, and you've all been passed around October 1st, 2025, in your packet, which is number 12. So... I'm just gonna talk real slow while we get to 6:35, because I can't do the next one. I don't have enough time. And so coming up at 6:35 is our public hearing regarding the change in stock interest and corporate name. So we have about 15 seconds before I'll get to that, and I see that Matthew Porter is online. And so we'll get to you in just a second, sir. And in the meantime, you can play some pole music.
Sorry, I'll have that queued up for it.
It's 6:35, and we're gonna open the public hearing. The Mendon Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, at 6:35 PM, in the Upper Town Hall located at 20 Main Street, Mendon, Massachusetts, to consider the application for change of stock interest and change of corporate name or DBA for Sri-Nang Sang Corp., DBA Liquor World, to Sri-Nay Sang Corp., DBA Liquor Hub, under MGL Chapter 138, Section 12. All interested parties are invited to attend and will be given an opportunity to be heard. So I'd be looking for a motion to open this hearing.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Be open. So Jeremy, tell us what's going on today.
Yeah, we have a turning map order for the applicant online right now. This is a change in stock ownership consolidation between three owners to one owner, and then the name change here. And Matt can talk about either any wrinkles in that or any other substantive changes in the application.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, Board. Pretty good summation there. My name's Matthew Porter. I represent Sri-Nay Sang Corporation. Along with me on the Zoom hearing tonight is Niton Raval, who's the applicant before you. This is fairly straightforward. This is a consolidation of shareholders for the business that's currently doing business at Liquor World. Niton is buying out the other two partners. He will remain there. There's no change in manager, so really just an internal transfer. As he takes this over on his own, they are gonna be rebranding it as Liquor Hub instead of Liquor World, so that is part of the application before you. But other than the name change, no substantive changes to the business, no changes to the hours or the operation or anything along those lines. It's more so just an internal transfer of stock, which requires town and ABCC approval because of the liquor license.
Right, Board, is there any discussion on this administrative task here? Excuse me?
You're being the witness.
On just this ask then, is there anybody in the audience who-
Sorry, we didn't hear the name of it, but did we say the address just for-
I-
Just because I think it's useful to know. I know, I know where it is, but I believe it's on Cape Road.
Nick, what's the, what's the address? It's not, it's not on the application portion of it.
It's a, it's a 1K Road, Mendon, Mass.
Thank you.
Clarity.
Got it, thank you. Yes, it isn't listed here, but right up on the corner. All right, so, right, so sorry. Is there anybody in the audience or online who would like to speak to this public hearing? All right, seeing as there's no discussion from the Board or from the community, I'd be looking for a motion to close this hearing.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Hearing none, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the application for change of stock interest and change of corporate name or DBA for Sri-Nay Sang Corp., DBA Liquor World, to Sri-Nay Sang Corp., DBA Liquor Hub, and I apologize if I butchered your name.
So moved. And further.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. All those against? Right, motion passes. You guys are all set. Thanks very much for doing business amended.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Have a great night. All right, so our next hearing is at 6:45, and so I'm gonna jump down to the sign request, which is number 13, 13A, which is Trees for Hope Sign Request. And they're looking to place three-by-three signs at various common intersections around Bendon, at North and Milford, at Millville and 16, at Providence and Hartford, and they would be there from November 21st to December 7th. Do I have any additional information I'm missing there?
Do we have anyone here from Trees of Hope who'd like to speak on this? So yeah, this is something that the Select Board approved last year as well. I appreciated the applicant's specificity in the location, the timeframe, size. This is a great community event that the town has allowed to advertise for this truncated period previously.
Can you say, so the community event is Trees for Hope, but do they, I think there was a letter, but it's a fundraiser, a nonprofit?
Yeah, for, it's, it's in Upton. Let me get the specifics. I had it in last year's packet. So it's trees that are donated by, by community members, and then they're on display, and then they're, they're raffled off. Last year, the event supported the Alzheimer's Association and another community event called Impact Together about kind of community awareness on, excuse me, on similar diseases. So I'm not sure of the applicant this year, of the recipient this year, sorry, but it is, it supports community organizations, and that ended up in the community.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve the placing of these signs for the time period specified. Does anybody?
Right, I'm moving to approve the sign request for three-by-three pre-stating signs for the 2026 Trees for Hope. We place it in the intersection of North and Milford, the island at the intersection of Millville Road and Route 16, and the island at the intersection of Providence Street and Hartford Ave. between November 21st, 2025, and December 7th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Trees of Hope. Just remember to remove your signs when your event is over. All right, so we have three minutes. So conflict of interest training exempted groups. So there are groups of workers that are exempt from the conflict of interest training, either because their jobs don't take them into public meeting space, or they work for a very short period of time, and we need to exempt them each year, right?
Yes, so page, page 241 in your packets explains this. So yes, it's advisory, and Massachusetts General Law allows municipalities to exempt certain employees from completing the conflict of interest and code of ethics acknowledgement. As the Chair said, they aren't in positions where they have either the authority, responsibility, or individual decision-making, where this should be necessary, and the state finds it to be overly onerous for some of these positions. So the positions that the town is looking to exempt and has previously exempted, unclear for the vote or not, have been senior veteran tax abatement workers, seasonal workers in both the winter and summer, and then poll workers. This was a recommendation from the town clerk who oversees this.
So it seems rational and reasonable, and it is with keeping with current practice, so I'd like to get this officially on the books, and I'd be looking for a motion.
Move to exempt senior veteran abatement workers, seasonal workers, including winter and summer staff.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Motion passes, thank you very much. All right, so in a minute here, 45 seconds, we're gonna start the next public hearing. I, as the Chair, am gonna recuse myself as a close neighbor to this particular situation, and so in keeping with no vision of unfairness, I'm going to step back, and the Vice Chair, Mr. Goddard, is going to take control of the public meeting for that period. And like I said, like we'd like to keep comments short. We need to get to another meeting with the planning team, and so if this does end up going long, we're gonna stop that meeting, and we're gonna continue it on to the next week. So, Mr. Goddard. And if anybody else has any comments before we get started?
So I, at a previous public hearings for Vanderbrock Farm, I disclose that I have a friendly personal relationship with a number of family members. I have no financial interest in the company, but just for clarity, I also have friends in the family.
Okay. Well, 6:45, well done.
And Mendon Select Board continues the public hearing on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, at 6:45 in the Upper Town Hall, located at 20 Main Street, Mendon, Mass., to consider the application for Vanderbrock Farm, for Farmer Brewery pouring permit, a Farmer Series wine, winery pouring permit, and application for 19H Farmer Series pouring permit, located at 18 Level Street, Mendon, Mass., 01756, under MGL Chapter 138, Section 12. All interested parties are invited to attend and will be given an opportunity to be heard. With that, I will take a motion to open and continue the meeting.
I move to open and continue the meeting as read by the Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
With that, meeting is open, and I would invite the panelists to hop in. As the Chair said, we're gonna try to keep this brief, so if we can keep this to five or 10 minutes, a quick overview of what you're looking to do, that'd be great.
You got it. Jeremy, can you tell me how to share my screen, please?
Sure, are you in?
I'm in the meeting. Thank you. Yeah, it's this right here. Yeah.
Give permission. Should be good.
Okay. Okay. Cool. Thank you for having us here tonight. I understand that time is an issue. I was gonna give the Board like a very brief, how's it going over at the farm? But if you want me to skip over how's it going, then-
Take the time you need.
Okay.
To generate questions and move.
Okay.
Time to see, receive this.
Cool, so how's it going? This is the update. It's obviously not October 1st, but it's still pretty much the same, so I wanted to just give a quick update on beer, live music, the loft, and parking. Beer's going good. We have two different beers that we're offering, and that's about it. Hang on, I'm all over the place. Okay, one of the questions that had come up before was like, is it gonna bring in more customers? And we have found that it hasn't really brought in more customers. We've noticed that it's kind of just an additional offering for people who are visiting the farm. And you can see, you know, we have a lot of different offerings, so that's all about beer, live music, there's our little wagon stage. It's going pretty good. As you can see, we've had just a couple of live performances each month, almost all solo artists, and it's been well-received by our customers. Here's a picture of the loft. This space was approved by the Board on the springtime. We've successfully held our first event. It was a wedding shower for 25 people, and that's about as far as we've made it, but it's going good. A beautiful space. Here we go. Oh. My fingers are faster than, okay. Parking is going good as well. As you probably know, the parking issues have been resolved with the town, so we feel like we're in adherence with the agreement that we made with the town. So we have Level Street on one side of the street and parking for the A-frame on the other side of the street. So today, we're here to talk about the A-frame property, which is at 18 Level Street. So before you tonight are the three pouring permits, Farmer Winery, a Farmer Brewery, and then the 19H Farmer Series, which will combine the wine and the beer to be able to be poured in each other's area, we'll say. So those are the three permits that we're requesting tonight. So here is just a picture of the lot. So the bottom lot that's outlined in yellow is where the A-frame is located, and you can see it's just across the street. So if anyone didn't know where it was, that's where it is. Here's a couple pictures of the property from the front and the back. These are gonna be our serving areas, one of the inside, and we're also planning to put like a little counter to be able to serve outside as well. As you can see, we've gotten, and this was in the application packet, we've gotten our federal and state licenses, so we have our licenses to produce wine and beer at 18 Level Street. There's the tentative floor plan, as you can see, a few tables, a small bar, a back patio, some picnic tables outside, a similar setup to what we have now, with the exception being that we'll have, you know, the indoor space now. So a few important things. They, we hope spring of 2026, but at the rate we're going, who knows?
She's blaming me for slowing down.
Slowing me down. Anticipated days of operation, this is not set in stone. Right now, we're open on Fridays and Sundays, and when we move to the new property, I think it will probably continue to be Fridays and Sundays. At some point, I think we would probably wanna open on Saturdays as well. It makes sense that there would be a small expansion of hours. So those are just anticipated, nothing definite yet. And just to clarify, because it is two separate, one farm on two separate addresses, I just wanted to give you some information about where the main bases of operation are. So the hope is that winery retail would be mainly happening at the new property at 18 Level Street. That's not to say that we're never gonna sell a bottle of wine at 25 Level Street. We would. We're also a blueberry farm. When people come to pick blueberries, they would also wanna buy wine. We would still have wine available during that time. Same thing for Christmas trees. When people come buy Christmas trees, we would still be selling wine at 25 Level Street, but the main base of operation would be at 18 Level Street. So the idea is that the winery as it exists now, the retail operation of the winery that is at 25 Level Street, that whole operation would move to 18 Level Street. They wouldn't be open both places at the same time. That's not our vision at all. Wine production would still be happening at 25 Level Street. However, we are licensed now to produce at 18 Level Street, and the vision would be at some point, you know, likely when my parents decide to give it up, that I would start making wine, and it would happen at 18 Level Street instead of at 25 Level Street. Blueberries and Christmas trees are still in their spot, and private events at the loft. And questions?
Any questions from the Board?
So, I think just for, again, for clarity, so that you've already been approved at the state-
The federal and state, yes, yes.
Licenses.
Yes.
So this is, the final piece is the town approval.
For a pouring license. Yes, yep.
Your license to be a winery-
Yep.
And, and-
And, and sell retail, I assume, as well. Like if we wanted to sell bottles of wine to go, we could do that. We, we have the licensing to do that. This would be a pouring permit to serve wine and beer drinks.
At that location, at the 18.
So if this is approved, once it opens across the street-
Yep.
Does that mean that the consumption's gonna move from one side of the street to the other, or is it gonna be on both?
The licenses will exist in both places, but they wouldn't be open simultaneously.
So you'd have either one side or the other, or?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Right, there could be an occasion when we have a small party at the loft, for instance, and we would be serving wine at the loft, and it could be while, you know, we were open at 18 Level Street.
But your, but your plan is that the, the current situation where everybody is at 25 outside of the picnic tables, that's gonna migrate to the other side of the street and won't have it over there anymore.
Correct.
At, at 25, just at 18.
Correct.
Okay. And the expectation, any live music that's currently on 25 will be migrating to 18 as well?
Correct.
That may require an additional entertainment permit?
Understood. Yeah, for sure, I understand that.
Any other questions?
Is there food service at 18?
Yes, there will be. That is not the plan down.
So the plan would be food truck?
Well, we have like a small food service operation of our own, so we-
25.
At 25 Level Street. So yes, the idea would be that we would have a small food service operation as well. We, you know, we do soft pretzel sticks at a few little grazing boxes. We're not planning on expanding past that, and yes, we would continue to have food trucks as well. Yep.
And imagine you know this, but that requires Board of Health permitting and all that, separate from this Board.
Understood.
So I think it's changing is the location from one side of the street to the other.
You got it.
This came up in a previous discussion about, what's the current capacity for the new, for the A-frame?
It was on, well, I was, so this did come up before, and I was told that the building inspector is the only person that can set the capacity, but I did do my best to-
I guess the larger question I-
Under 100 people.
I wanna make sure the capacity matches the parking availability, get the zoning in place for number of space-
Sure.
For head and for employees, so as one, and make sure that, we talked about public safety last time, and Chief said that he was, that he had discussed and understands sort of access points on 25. I just wanna make sure we have something formalized and documented on how public safety's gonna be addressing access at each point, how that's all gonna work, just-
Sure.
More of a, when we're not here anymore, there's something actually documented, people to look back to what the plan was.
Yeah, for sure.
So if it's not there now, it would be something that probably want to look for takeaway, to see something more formalized in writing on how it's gonna work.
Yep, so in terms of capacity, the bar that we have planned that is for 20 people, and then I think about 24 more seats apart from that.
So there will be seating inside the-
Those are the inside seatings, and then outside.
Picnic tables going to be, tend to be moving?
The picnic tables are gonna be moving. We're gonna have a little patio off the back. There'll be some outdoor seating there, and then mostly on the back lawn area. Yeah.
Plans to increase the number of patrons?
No.
So it's gonna be, so the numbers is gonna stay potentially the same?
Yes.
Just gonna be on the other side?
Yes.
Also with indoor seating, whereas you're, I think currently at the-
Yeah.
Don't have-
We don't have indoor seating, so when we, when it rains or whatever, we cannot.
We did have at one point, but then with COVID, you know, we shut that indoor space down.
You know, we're halfway through our allotted time. So I'm hoping, anybody have any questions, comments regarding the, for the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. As you may recall from the last hearing, my name is Henry Lane, I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Rugey Errol, who are the neighbors throughout the across the street from us. And the first thing that comes to my mind is, you've heard everything I'm gonna have to say, but I'm gonna have to say it again, but we've lost the plot. This is no longer a farm brewery or farmed winery. This is now a pub system that happens to be adjacent to a farm. This land at 18 was never part of the farm. It was purchased a couple of years ago. It was purchased a couple of years ago. It's nothing to do with farming. It's just a commercial operation that is inappropriately located. This is a residential neighborhood. As I say, I represent the person who lives directly across the street. He came to rural Menden to enjoy the amenities of a rural community. And now he's finding out that he's got a pub system coming in across the street from his house. Now, you've all been down to the street, you know, it's totally inadequate for a commercial operation like that's being proposed. Now, now, and now we have, well, I guess a representation that they're going to stop the operation with 25. But in fact, we find out that we're running now a function facility at 25. So we've got a function facility, we've got an entertainment complex, we've got beer and wine service at potentially three locations. You've got three locations that are currently, well, two locations currently permitted, a third one coming in. So you tell me where the farm element is, they grow blueberries, great. But that's no longer the business. It's now a pub system, function hall, entertainment complex, none of which is contemplated or should be permitted in this rural neighborhood. And as I say, you've lost the plot. I wish them well, but if they want to run that kind of a business, they should do it in an appropriately zoned commercial district, not in a suburban rural neighborhood on the, I guess, the idea that, well, it's a farm. It's no longer a farm. That's not what their business is anymore. And to license it as a farm is just disingenuous. So I haven't spent my five minutes yet, so I'll just go through the technical aspects very quickly. First of all, we've gone through this, the parking at 25 was a mess. Despite the fact that theoretically they can't use the parking lot at 18 for 25. In fact, use it, it's packed. They're using illegally, they have. And I have no reason to expect that it's going to be any different when they move the operation. If they move the operation, they still haven't committed to giving up their license for 25. And they clearly have no intention of doing that because they're going to run the function facility over there. So they're going to keep their licenses unless they're going to commit tonight to giving up their license for 25 and moving the operation to 18. But they're not doing that and you're not asking them that. So if you look at the parking issue, they didn't have adequate parking for 25. I would love to see you have some requirements that they actually provide onsite parking at 18 for the actual capacity of the facility. Nobody's asking that, okay?
Just a point of order, I believe I just asked that, so.
Did you get an answer?
We have a takeaway, public safety is aware of the ask and we ask. So that's a takeaway from this discussion. It literally just happened.
And so you don't, the answer is you don't have. You don't have a parking plan, you don't know what the capacity of the parking lot is. And you have a general idea of what the capacity of the facility is, but you don't really have any real numbers. And you're relying on the goodwill of the Vanderbok family. And I'm sure that's, you know, a strong read, but your responsibility is to make sure it's appropriate and you haven't done that.
Well, I, we put the action to make sure it is appropriate. So at this point in time, we are taking the action we're supposed to take, sir. So do not, unless we decide to pass and vote and confirm it without that information, then you have a point for what you're making. At this time, you can ask for more information, you have the right to continue the hearing. So please don't tell us what we are doing or not doing.
I remind everyone, this is a licensing hearing, not a zoning hearing. And it's the opinion of Town Council that actions ancillary to agriculture, including agritourism, are allowable uses under Mendon's right to farm law by law, which we, again, you made the same points at the last hearing and I made the same points too, that this is, this is the licensing hearing, not a zoning one.
And one of the requirements, one of the requirements should be that you ensure that there's adequate parking. Clearly, history has shown that in the past, including the licenses issued last year, you did not ensure that there was adequate parking because there wasn't, it was a total failure. The parking lot at 18 was used essentially to capacity because it was inadequate parking at 25. So I'm not being cynical, but based on experience, this board has not ensured that there was adequate parking for the facility. And I'm encouraging you that in this case you will. And I'm not going to disagree with the town administrator, but in fact, sale of malt beverages is not permitted under the zoning law. There's an exemption for wineries on farms, not for malt beverages, not for entertainment, not for food service. So, or function facility, none of those are covered. Laws, brewery, as I say, the winery is permitted, nothing else. Everything else is, is a violation of zoning.
I believe the last time we had this discussion and we, we agreed to allow it to expand to the malt beverage, to the, to the beer, there were the two different beers manufactured or brewed were allowable under that same law as the. So there is a legal precedent that allows it. That's why my understanding is that the state gave that license is because you're incorrect that the beer is allowed in an update to the law. And as far as the parking goes, my understanding is that these two properties, the opening bridge and the cross street from each other, as separate properties, now they've been purchased. At some point, our Town Council told us that they actually become one property.
And if it's just separated by a public way, it's considered contiguous farm.
It's a contiguous farm. And again, if you can give me a legal precedent that says that what the town administrator said is wrong, my understanding is under the law and the town right to farm by law, these two contiguous properties separated by a public way are a farm. And they grow blueberries and they, they turn so the blueberries into wine. They serve that. And again, everything that they've done is supported by the law. And I'm not sure we have any other options, but if you have any kind of legal recitation, please give it to us.
Let me suggest to you that this discrepancy in your part, it's up to you to decide whether this is an appropriate use, whether it's legally allowed or not. I'm suggesting that even if it was legal, which it isn't.
Well, stuff is don't, we just said, you just said, if it, then if it wasn't legal, but it is. I don't want to go back and forth short on time. I just want to summarize, you've made two points. One, it's not appropriately zoned for the business being licensed. And two, you want to make sure that the parking is adequate for our zoning bylaws. It's not, it's not an act, it's not a farming use as you see it is one thing. And parking, those are your two points, is that fair?
Those are two of them, yes.
Do you have more? I don't want to revisit parking. I don't want to revisit whether or not agritourism is a fair use of farmland. Any other points?
I would address the question. I agree with you that it's contiguous because it's across the street. But you look for the law, your zoning bylaw says that parking has to be on the same side of the street, even though it's a contiguous piece of property.
Excuse me, I don't want to, I understand the parking. Mr. Maroli made a point on contiguous found based on our Town Council's perspective. We're going to probably defer to our Town Council, so that's fine. Any other points between, besides the two you have made? So I want to give other people a chance to speak.
Well, is the entertainment license moving?
That is, that was discussed. We talked about if the entertainment moves, we'll probably need to do a new entertainment license for the new address. And I heard, yes, I understand that. Any food Board of Health licensing? Yes, I understand that. So these are things we actually talked about and will be pursued. And we're here to talk about the licensing for the pouring permits.
And I understand that the, that the service at 25 is going to cease.
I, I heard that the event building will still continue to function.
Sure.
And that the, there is no promise to cease. There was an indication that what is currently done at 25, we've done at 18 when it goes live. There has been no promise of that. We have not asked for a promise to your earlier point. At this time, that is something we can consider as we deliberate. Do we want to have three, two separate pouring permits? Do we want to ask? I don't know. But to answer your question, it has not been promised, has not been asked.
I would appreciate it if that would be.
Okay, that gets noted. Any other comments, questions, and would like to speak regarding this? Eton.
Let me see something, can I please?
Sure, come on up.
Michael Richer, I live across the street from Vanderbok's. I can't believe I'm a liar, trying to fight my freedom with my own house. I'm a Menden resident who will know, I'm ready to express my strong concerns regarding the recent applications submitted by Vanderbok Farm Winery for a malt liquor license. While I understand the importance of supporting local businesses, I believe this proposal presents some serious issues that could negatively impact our town and neighborhood. Number one, safety and traffic concerns. The roads surrounding this property are narrow, rural, and not designed to support increased traffic. Especially I walk every day and I count in seven cars from the end of Level Street Millville roadside to my house, which is not even a quarter of a mile away. That's not even with the property owner. Anyway, it comes with, designed to support increased traffic, especially the kind of traffic that comes with alcohol service and public events. Just last week in front of my left, my home and ended up following a vehicle that exited Vanderbok Winery. And they, and the driver was behaving erratically, raising real concern about impaired driving and public safety. If this is already happening, what can we expect of alcohol that's served more regularly at this location? Number two, incompatibility with the surrounding area. This area is quiet, residential and agricultural, not a commercial zone meant for events involving alcohol. Allowing a liquor license here could fundamentally change the character of the neighborhood. Many Menden residents, me included, chose to live here because of its rural peaceful atmosphere, not to be in their event venue serving alcohol. Number three, impact on property values. It's well known that commercial activity of its nature drives out property values in nearby residential areas. Noise, traffic, and potential late night disturbance is not things most prospective buyers want to deal with. And current homeowners should not be forced to absorb the financial burden, quality of life consequences. And number four, concerns about agricultural status. It's worth asking whether the businesses generally operating as a 500 Massachusetts law agricultural guidelines or whether that designation is being used primarily to sidestep zoning and alcohol regulations. If the latter is true, it represents an unfair use of the system and could set a troubling precedent for future applicants. For all these reasons, I strongly urge the select board to deny the malt liquor license application. I also request to be notified of any incoming hearings or public forums with this matter will be discussed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No comments, questions? We're coming up to our next meeting in three minutes. If there's no other questions or comments from the board, I would like to recommend continuance, but I hear two or three things we should pursue for research standpoint.
I have a couple of takeaways, questions that were asked by the board and by commenters, which there wasn't, wasn't a documented answer to that I could share with everybody right now. So I think it's fair to continue and me go do a little bit of work and come back and continue this the next meeting.
And I mean, another one, I think the safety, the traffic concerns, I think an assessment would be, you know, from public safety, a report back on their perspective to what the last speaker's concerns were. I think that's fair, we should probably pursue that. And I think residents on level will be happy to hear a review of traffic concerns on that particular road, regardless of the business in front of us.
I just want to say that like there has, to our knowledge, there hasn't been any traffic related issues in terms of like accidents or anything like that that have happened because.
To me, this is about due diligence. We want to make sure we're recognizing what we're hearing.
Yeah, for sure.
Have to take formal action to address some of the questions that we're getting.
Okay.
And I think something from Town Council in writing regarding agritourism and the, you know, the zoning and make sure we put that last piece to bed once and for all. We can, as board, when we get that opinion, we can adopt or say that is our opinion and we can have that for future discussions as well.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
Damon? So if there are no other comments from the board, from applicants or public at large, I will accept a motion to continue the public hearing, to consider the application of our farm for farmer brewery pouring permit, Farmer Series Winery pouring permit, an application for the 1980s Farmer Series pouring permit located at 18 Level Street.
A vote.
Second.
Mr. Board, clarification, continue this to the next regular meeting, which is November 2nd or November 5th?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that will be continued to November 5th. We'll post, we'll post a, we're not under an obligation to put it again in newspaper notify letters, but we'll, we'll put it in the newspaper, will be something on our website, it'll be something on our Facebook at the time, but it will be towards the front of the meeting on November 5th.
Ain't discovered. On favor.
Aye.
Thanks, closing the meeting.
Thank you guys so much, appreciate you taking the time.
And I am going to hand the gavel back.
All done.
Wow, Mr. Gabbard, you did such a great job.
15, baby.
Alright, so I would invite members of the planning board to come up and have a seat.
Hey guys, how you doing? This is Damon, I'm the acting chair. I'm sorry I couldn't be there today in person. I have to leave for a destination wedding at 3:00 AM, so I'm just trying to get everything finished up. But we'd be more than happy to have a conversation with you guys and let's figure this out.
We're just, Damon, we're just waiting for the room to quiet down just for a second, then we'll get started.
No problem.
Amy getting married?
No, Lonnie is though.
Alright. Got lost in the agenda there. Alright, so I just need you guys to open your meeting and then sort of get chatting.
Yeah, we can open the meeting at 7:18, is that close enough on your time?
Uh, 7:16 and 43 seconds.
There you go. So we're here, whatever conversation you guys would like to have, or where, where do you want to start with this whole program?
The first thing is you've got a member participating remotely. And since this is the opening of a new meeting, I just want to announce that it's also, it's being, your meeting is being recorded as well. And since it is a, any vote that the planning board takes, you'll have to take by roll call.
Correct.
Alright, so tonight we're looking to appoint a new member to the planning board after the passing of the chair. And this is something we're statutorily required to do now. And so that is why the boards are meeting together to do this. And so we have three.
Three candidates.
Candidates to interview.
And just to be clear to everyone, this is to fill the, not the remainder of an unexpired term, but fill, fill a seat until the next election. So this term will go through May 19th of 2026. And then I don't know offhand what that term, conceivably this person could be, you know, up again in a year, a year from now. I'm filling up their own term. But this, this is just to get to the election and then either this person, somebody else, whoever else could, could stand for the, for the remainder of the term.
Correct.
Alright, so in the order that is posted on the agenda is how we're going to call up the candidates. So first, could I have Stephen Carlstrom up to chat?
Mr. Chair, before we get going, I just wanted to expose that the daughter of Stephen and my, my daughter are friends. So we have a relationship outside of, outside of the board, but it will not affect my decision.
Alright, thank you for letting us know in the little town of Menden, that is not surprising.
Is that right here?
Ah, yes, sir, that'd be great. So just tell us your name and your street.
My name is Steve Carlstrom, I live at 90 North Ave.
Excellent. And tell us why you want to be on the planning board.
I moved here August of 19, love this town. I've been wanting to find a way to serve it. I thought this might be a good opportunity for that. From what I know of a planning board, maybe my, I'm a civil engineer, I have 30 years of construction experience. That, that might play a role in that.
He was just agreeing.
Okay.
Uh, have you attended any planning board meetings?
I have not.
Do you know what happens at a planning board meeting?
I assume it is about how land is used throughout town. Is that incorrect?
I don't, planning board, what do you guys do at your meetings? I mean, I don't want to make a summary, I'd like to hear, you know.
In the wrong place.
I can give you a quick, I can give you a quick explanation, I guess. So we basically oversee site plans for any commercial property or any residential plans that come through. But you know, if there's a, a piece of property that's buildable, then they will bring a plan to us. And we will, you know, make sure that there's plenty of upland, make sure that there's no. then they will bring a plan to us and we will, you know, make sure that there's plenty of upland, make sure that there's no issues with the square footage of the property, the right frontage, sideline setbacks, everything like that to make sure that it conforms. Um, and then if there's bigger projects, commercial, like say we just did a big with the grocery store that was going to be a, um, that hasn't been done yet, but it is approved. You know, there's big, big things like that that could happen in the town, but there's not a lot of that because we don't have a lot of, you know, public utilities. Um, so yes, there is a, you know, that's basically what we do.
So I also have multiple years of surveying experience as well with construction and CAD work and Masbills and all sorts of.
Yes, so I should preface that it's, it's more about the, the audience and the viewers just hearing what the planning board does and then knowing that the planning board is a separate entity from the select board makes decisions on their own.
Yep.
Um, so there are a few committees and boards like that in town and, and this is one of them. Um, alright, so, uh, opening it up to the, the board, do you have any questions? At this board.
I'll let the select board go first. Said their meeting.
No question.
Well, because I already spoke and you're just to the right, so that's, I just tend to do that, but, uh, but if there are no questions, I'm, I'm happy to move on to another.
I'd like to ask, okay, it's the same question, my usual question is, and it was kind of addressed already, but tell me how your relevant experience meshes with the vision of the board? And, um, how, how would you, what would you bring to the board to, uh, to execute its vision?
Well, what is the vision of the board? I'm not part of them, so I don't know.
That's a good point.
Well, I mean, statutorily, you guys have a requirement.
Yeah, I, I guess I, my description of that would be, I think it's important that, that this board selects somebody who, um, would look after the broad interests of the town and the community and not just any particular group.
Of course.
And I think that also it's a balance of responsible development, a vision is as described in the master plan and that it's done with transparency and, and, uh, in an ethical manner.
I am honest to a fault, unfortunately, and that's actually got me in trouble over the years.
And I have a question I ask as well, is would you have any, in your private, do you have any business coming for the board? Say it again, in your current role, job, career, would you have any business that would come for the?
No, I work for a utility contractors mostly in the city or Cambridge or nothing even remotely near around here. And if that was the case, if it, if I needed to step down because of some sort of conflict, then that's something I would have to do myself.
Yeah, there's always recusal, there's some chance to.
Yep.
I have, uh, my, uh, regular question, which is, so thank you for your interest in, in serving the town. Uh, we definitely need more people to step up and do that. And I guess my question to you is, would you, have you considered other boards and committees that may also have vacancies and would you be interested in, uh, consider?
I would, this one seemed the most applicable.
And I just, I just wanted, uh, just clarity seems to also be my, uh, like buzzword for today, but so the, the planning board is an elected board. It's a five, five member board, so this, uh, seat would be up on the, um, ballot in May along with one or two other seats for reelection.
I believe Bill's was the seat that was.
Was it just?
So what I said earlier about whenever that expires, so if the term does expire on, in.
Oh, okay.
So this is, this term does expire and this would be for the next.
And so this happened to be there.
Yep. There's one up every year, okay.
Who is, I was communicating with Dylan. Is Dylan?
Dylan's right there.
Okay, hello.
I'm Dylan.
Uh, one of the, one of the reasons why I thought this was also a good idea for myself is my work can be very demanding and I would not want it to, I would not want to join something and then not be able to participate accordingly. And from what I understand, it is a five monthly hour, two hour meeting with some minimal review and things like that.
I believe the only time that changes was when there's a big project.
Yes, correct, which, and also with, with the, uh, the passing of the other member, with this only being a short term, um, it would give me an opportunity to be in it short term to make sure that work for what my schedule is, because you know, my alarm goes off at four thirty in the morning, so.
Alright, um, so, thank you for your time.
Sure.
Sorry, I feel rushed, we got a couple other people.
No, it sounded like you had other meeting that ran lately today.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions for me or?
Well, one of the questions that I had was that you would, would you be committed to run for the five year term that's coming up in May?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I also have a question, uh, Mike started to touch on it, but it sounds, uh, just confirming for me, do you own a business in town at all?
No.
Okay.
Uh, I guess my question to you would be, just new to government again, along with Elena, thanks for your interest in getting engaged. I think, um, the question that I have for you is regardless of the planning board's vision, which really is in line with the master plan, what's your vision for the town? How would you balance responsible development along with maintaining like the rural and agricultural kind of character of the town?
Well, what you gotta look at is you have to look at what you're building around and up against and how are you going to impact people who are residents and residents of this town for a reason. And there's a lot of open space available, it's just where you choose to use it. Uh, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Alright, Stephen, thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Apologize for going first, it's the hardest slot.
No. Hey, I'm using the, the, the managed crews of guys, so.
Uh, and up next we have Carl Hummel, Carl wants to come on up. Let us know your name and address.
Hey, my name is Carl Hummel, fifteen Misco Road, Mendon.
And, uh, why are you interested in the position tonight?
Uh, I'm interested because I'm been serving on the Conservation Commission for almost a decade and that's given me a lot of grounding in the conservation aspects of town and space, working with the land use and the CPC. I just was appointed to the Finance Committee, so that's getting me a lot of exposure to the people who work in Town Hall. Serving on the Planning Board would give me the opportunity to see how the rest of the town interacts with people in Town Hall. Uh, one of the questions that was asked, and I'll, I'll, I'll give it as part of my stump speeches, what's my vision for the town and how would I see the planning board fitting into it? Um, the town needs more commercial development to help diversify our tax base between residences and commerces. As part of that, uh, we need to look at the Water District project and that will make it much more accessible for businesses along Route sixteen and the other places the Water District would go. Serving on the Conservation Commission, we're downstream of the Planning Board and the Board of Health, so I've had lots of exposure to working on large projects like twenty-three Cape Road, uh, the supermarket project and whatnot. So, in that sense, I'm aware of how the Planning Board works, I've spoken with Dylan about what the responsibilities are. I know how to read a site plan and ask questions to, uh, applicants who are coming in.
Alright, so you, you hit on, you know how the planning board works, what was the third question I asked? There you go, have you been to a planning meeting?
Yes, I've attended several planning meetings remotely, uh, in part because the Conservation Commission on the very large projects, especially twenty-three Cape Road. Uh, we did not have a conservation agent at the time, so I leveraged the planning board's ability. We took a lot of the stuff the Concom normally would have done and we rolled it into the paperwork that the planning board was working in, in their permit application.
Good, and then, uh, just before I hand it over to the board, uh, if you are appointed to this position, what's your plan for Concom?
Uh, by Mendon bylaw, I would have to resign my position, you would then advertise it for forty-five about two months, you have another round of interviews for Concom.
Great, thanks for clarifying that, so board?
What he, he's, uh, yes, the question I asked before, having any.
He was listening, so.
Well, no, I, I do have business, at some point, uh, I'm working with Allen Engineering on preparing an ADU, plan a, a separate building on my site. It's unclear whether I'm going to go for the nine hundred square feet by right or if I go for the twelve hundred feet. If I go for a twelve hundred square foot one, that would get planning board approval, I'd recuse myself and, and, and get the usual questioning. My understanding from Dylan is that there's already a number of other ADU permits in the pipeline, so I expect the planning board will be, you know, looking at a, a number of those in the next.
And by business, I, I mean more, you run a business.
Oh, no. Information for both boards, um, when this first came to be a project, Carl filed a conflict, conflict disclosure form with the appointing authority, who is the select board, um, and said, this, he attests that this will not affect his professional judgment, should Allen Engineering come in front of Conservation Commission for other, other business not related. So he's checked his, his box.
In terms of personal business, I retire, that's why I can serve on.
And it addresses my usual question, I think the answer is you are already serving on other boards and committees.
Yes.
Multiple ones.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm having a lot of fun in the finance media with Charlie, who, 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 next, next Monday and getting ready for the town, but the, the town meeting, I'm also on the general bylaw review committee. Leaving the Concom and then moving over to planning board, it's the same kind of work of reviewing applications, uh, interviewing applicants, uh, working with Dylan instead of Isabella in terms of questions that the town may have about things. And especially now that we have Terry just joining the Concom, he's amazing and, and him coming on and the other members on comfortable that they are able to. Talk very.
Remember, he was the gentleman that we appointed with all of that.
Federal state, he'll be coming before you when you properly also, but I won't say anything for. Well, let me answer my question.
Bye. Alright, uh, planning board?
You bring a lot of civic influence, but.
Uh, I've known Carl, uh, for many, a few years now, dealt with him in conservation, uh, he's very thorough. Um, great guy, I think this, I don't, I mean, conservation is gonna lose a good guy, so, uh, but how many boards are you gonna, can, how many boards can you be on? I know that you could only be on one, when, when I was, when I was on conservation, I just, how many boards are you allowed to be on nowadays?
I would drop, no longer be on the Conservation Commission, I would be able to stay on the Finance Committee because that's appointed by the select board and the General Bylaw Review Committee is not a amended bylaw committee, it's sort of an ad hoc creation by the all sorts of times we make bylaw ourselves. Uh, and so, and, and since I'm retired, I have, uh, time during the week to, to support all of, all of those obligations.
Okay, but, but I know the conservation's an appointed, um, and then finance is appointed, but you're allowed to be on, on two now, I guess?
The, the, the bylaw that was passed a couple of months ago does not restrict my participation in FinCom, does not respect my participation in, uh, GBRC. I would not be allowed to be on the Board of Health, there's only Board of Appeals.
I got you, okay, thank you.
And one of the things the GBRC is gonna get around to is generalizing that and saying how many elected boards, how many appointed boards you can be. That's on our, that's on our to do.
And, and I think if I just pull the thread on that a little bit, I think one of the knocks on that is, or was in the past, that, uh, when you have somebody that's on multiple boards, you lose a little bit of diversity of thought, so any, any feedback on that?
The, there's a trade-off between having multiple people on boards and having cross-pollinization. One of the things I've already noticed is that I'm frequently attending a meeting in town, but because I'm uh, for the general bylaw stuff and then, oh yeah, that's something that Concom needs to hear about. So, there is something to be said for both of those. Um, in addition, there are, there's a webpage on the town website, there's a whole lot of other positions, uh, that are, are, that are vacant, so I think this is a good fit for me, if other people are interested in participating in town governance, they can look on the website and, and sign up, there's a lot of, a lot of vacancies.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a lot of vacancy.
Yes, we're always looking for people.
Um, just, just in terms of, I want to make sure folks get the same questions asked to them, would you be interested in running for a five year term in May?
Yes.
Alright, so if there are more, more questions, thank you very much, Carl. And last but not least, uh, Francis. Are you, tell us, uh, your name and, uh, where you're located?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Frank Nero, and I'm also sometimes go by Fran or Randy.
Sorry.
Uh, that's all right, that's my. Uh, so my name's Frank Nero, I live at sixteen Dudley Road in Mendon, I live there with my wife and two children, I've lived there for almost twenty-five years. Uh, when I moved to town, um, uh, let me just back up a little bit, just to let you know what I do. I am a, um, Massachusetts attorney, I've been practicing for over thirty years in this area. My concentration is in real estate and finance, uh, involves a lot of permitting, uh, review and so forth, but I don't appear before boards on a regular basis, I've been to many planning board meetings, I've been to some uh, few of the Menden Planning Board for various reasons, none that I represented a client on. Uh, and I also have the unusual habit of watching town meetings on YouTube, so. But I've viewed, I've viewed a lot of them. Uh, my firm is currently located in Whitensville and we're mostly transactional, um, probably seven to eighty percent of our practice is real estate and, and a lot of transactional stuff. Uh, I'm interested in serving on the Menden Planning Board after having lived here for twenty-five years because I do care about the town's future growth, um, the character of the town, the quality of the, of life, uh, in the town. I originally served on the first master plan committee in town, uh, there was a little hiatus there and there was a restructuring, um, at some point. I'm a current member of the Land Use Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee in town, so I do participate in, um, these related fields as it relates to planning and all the issues that go along with it. I believe that my background in the law and real estate has given me that, uh, practical experience with zoning, permitting, land use. And I think I can bring that insight to the board, I can bring fairness in the board's deliberations, that's what I think I can provide. I mean, and committed to ensuring that those decisions are consistent with the town's master plan, uh, most responsible growth, economic opportunities and to apply the town's bylaws consistently. I'd be honored to contribute my time to these important issues. I am committed to run in May for a five year term and although I'm not sure if I can fill the enormous shoes left by Bill Ambrosino, I would do my best.
Alright. He checked off all the boxes.
Going last has first.
Yeah, I know, wait, we should have, I was supposed to step out, I realized that is, we're two minutes in. Um, so, uh, I've written the questions down, they involve us, we can make sure to have them, but have you been to planning board meetings before?
Uh, I have in the past and I've viewed, uh, too many on YouTube.
Uh, alright, uh, board?
Uh, I got a couple of questions. Uh, Mr. Nero, would you, where we have this master plan in place and you had been on it in the past, you're, you have the time to be more, be involved in whatever we have going down the road um, involving the master plan?
I would commit my time to that, yes.
Okay, thank you, um. I guess that's a big thing, because Bill was a big part of that, and I mean, I'm a little green on that part of it, so it'd be nice, I guess, to have somebody that would be committed to that, to work with us on that and maybe help out the rest of the board, also. you being an attorney, probably could might be able to keep us out of trouble too, maybe a little bit.
I know about that, but.
But yeah, I mean, that's all I have. Thank you.
So I'll just like open it up to all members. Does anybody have a question that was not answered by Frank?
Yes, sir. Obviously, a municipal board acts a lot different than a private practice. How would you adapt your expertise for serving the broader community fairly and collaboratively?
You know, I guess where, although it may operate differently, I think the issues are the same, right? Fairness and bylaws, and in this case with the master plan as well. I I think it's that same exact experience, dealing with people, dealing with the public, dealing with sometimes complicated land use issues. You know, as it relates to a a transaction. So again, although not a lot of my practice is devoted to land use, where we appear before boards for balances and special permits and so forth, a lot of times those issues are involved. So I think it's just a natural, a transition over to, you know, a municipal board. And again, I I have experience in the committees, you know, and and I have, you know, certain amount of experience in the operation of a board and the issues that they deal with. Thank you.
I have a question. So you're a member of the Land Use Committee. I know, because we
Yes.
together on it. So there is a Planning Board member of the Land Use Committee already. And so would your appointment to the Planning Board mean that you would need to step down from the Land Use Committee? Does that seem, if you are, you are like an at large. Right, so so that that is another.
I think that would be on to Town Council or the Select Board if if that were the case. And although I value the work that we put in with the Land Use Committee, and I would be sad to not participate. I I think the the permitting aspects of the Planning Board and so forth are as important.
There is not an express provision that prevents it within our bylaws. I think that if the term comes to an expiration as an associate member, not a representative from another community, that would be something that Select Board will take under consideration. Do you want two active Planning Board members to be part of it? But there's not an express. Right, right.
Evocation. All right, thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
I've got one. So it's been stated at past Planning Board meetings that our bylaws are only as good as they'll hold up in court. Just curious as to what your take is on that and how you support or refute that.
So my role on the zoning, the bylaw review committee, I must admit, is only to be I found that once I was once appointed and started participating, I could tell that they were already down the road with their decisions. You know, there was some final sorting out, and I think we've accomplished that. I think those proposed changes are very helpful. I think the bylaws previously left a little bit to be desired, but it's only natural with the town would date their bylaws as things change, or the town grows, or the other issues come up. I believe that those recommendations, those revisions to the bylaws were well thought out, well intentioned, and you know, a lot of times we compare those to similar towns that are facing similar issues. So I guess to answer your question, I think that the work they did was great. The work product was with that in mind, you know, making them understandable and thorough and so forth, and and I think they accomplished that.
Right, so. One last, look for questions and then we'll get to the hard part. All right. So thanks, Frank, for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
All right. And now the thing that I've never done, so will be difficult for us to do, I'm sure. Now we have to talk about how to appoint one of those three people. And so.
Yeah, so doing that with these three people in the room, what we asking, I believe, or how are we going about this?
Public meeting, so.
It'll be on YouTube anyways.
That's why I said this is the hard part, and this is kind of the hardest part of our job, public officials, is doing things in public. So, Jeremy, you were about to say something.
So yeah, it requires a majority vote of each board. So it's not just of the nine people who are here tonight. Majority vote on Planning Board and a majority vote on this one.
There'd be two separate motions.
Is there a preferential order, like just Planning Board propose something? If not, I would propose that that's probably the most recent.
I agree. I would agree with that approach. There was not one prescribed.
So.
Is the Select Board gonna make the motion for for the both the Planning Board and the and the Select Board, or do we want me to make a motion for the Planning Board when it's time?
There's gonna be two separate motions. The Planning Board is going to make a motion to appoint, and the Select Board will make a motion to appoint. If those two motions match, we will appoint that.
Okay. And then what if it doesn't?
We'll try again.
Okay.
So Planning Board, you had you had three members come before you, Stephen, Carl, and Francis. Sorry, Frank, I keep reading it directly off the sheet. So there's a multitude of ways about which you can do this. You can eliminate somebody and talk about two people. You can talk about all three of them and do a little hand vote. You can stare at each other and understand what each one of you wants and then propose a motion. Those are, those are options I see before.
Sure you don't want to go first?
I think you should make a recommendation.
I know, I'm just kidding.
Well, I'll throw it out there. Of the three candidates, I thought Frank brought a good balance of experience, both from the legal side as well as you know, demonstrating an interest and commitment to attending Planning Board meetings. I'd be interested in appointing Frank.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye, aye. Oh, wait, we got a roll call.
I have a roll, aye.
Eric College, aye.
Dave Cross, aye.
Damon Tenio, aye.
All right, Planning Board, way to get right to the point.
I'm making motion to appoint Frank Nero to the Dick and Planning Board, seat to expire May nineteenth, twenty twenty six.
I'll second that.
Is there any Select Board discussion? All right, so.
I echo your point on a good balance and an expertise that I think is not there on the board now from the legal side.
I was just gonna summarize that. Thank you, Mr. Goddard. Yeah, the the boards both here are recognizing experience and skill in this space, and we are not individual who came up here and put themselves out there for this position. That's not easy, so we do thank you. And to Stephen, there are a lot of open boards. Please come and join us for one of those. To Carl, we'll see you on all the other boards you're already on.
Me to that point, three great candidates.
Three great candidates.
I agree, it's the problem that's good to have.
It is. It it makes me think about all the stock of of smart individuals that we have in this town that could come join us and fill in some of these spots, so.
I think any of the candidates could serve the position well, so I'm very happy. I think this is a good choice, but I think any of them would serve the town well.
And I thank you for just, you know, standing up, putting your hand up and and, you know, offering your experience and service to the town. We don't see a lot of people sticking their hand up, so.
Right, I believe Bill would be happy and would probably want us to shut up and move on. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? So the motion passes. So congratulations to Frank. I guess we will work out, you will work out amongst your committees what you what you want to handle for the assignment in the Land Use Committee. We need to bring that here, we will. And then just don't forget to pull papers and get yourself ready for the mail elections. Oh, right. And go see Alan, please, tomorrow, and get sworn in and take, you already have your training or color public meetings. So and then this, the Planning Board needs to close their meeting, and then we will move on.
Make a motion with you, a second.
Roll call.
All in favor? I have a roll, aye.
Eric College, aye.
Dallas, aye.
Damon Tenio, aye. Thank you, everybody, and all the candidates. We appreciate everything. And Mr. Nero, we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Hey, you have a good trip. Congratulations to your brother.
Yeah, I don't know. We'll we'll check that out in a few years, right?
All right.
Good night.
Good night. We'd like to mention we are only six minutes late. So could I see the assessors up to have a chat? Good evening. You guys just need to open your meetings.
Dave's online. David?
Yes. I don't plan on saying anything, so I don't know if you want to open the meeting or not.
We are posted, so and open the Board of Assessors meeting at eight fifty one P M.
Seven fifty.
Sorry, seven fifty one.
Not that late, yes.
If you need me.
I went, hey, I went to work at Saturday in this morning, so to me it's eight fifteen.
Hey, so today we're gonna talk about the discussion for the percentage of the senior means tested exemption.
Board assessors meetings being recorded. And you have one member online, so if you take a vote, make sure it's roll call.
Open a meeting.
You will do it, your answer is one.
Okay, so here, for the past two years, we've come before the the board to give the vote on what percentage to give for the senior means tested exemption. The senior means tested exemption is open to those residents who are sixty five and older and file their state income tax return and receive what's called the circuit breaker tax credit on their income tax return. And then depending on what percentage the the board votes on will depend on how much the exemption comes out to be. This year for the the twenty.
Forgot, I'm Katie.
All right.
I forgot, okay. It's still recording. All right, thank you. Keep going.
The highest amount that a person could receive on the circuit breaker tax credit was two thousand seven hundred thirty dollars on the twenty four tax filing. So if the past two years, the board has voted for a hundred and fifty percent, that would equate to someone who received that top dollar amount, they would receive four thousand ninety five dollars as an exemption off of their real estate tax bill for F Y twenty six.
Just to be clear to the board, when we provide this exemption, this means base exemptions to seniors. It does not lower the levy that the town can collect on property taxes. Our levy then gets spread across all eligible taxpayers.
Residential tax.
Residential, thank you for the difference, including these folks. Their rate goes up a hair because they're it it went down quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, the the fiscal twenty five tax rate, there was a difference of three cents between it. So the residential tax rate was thirteen dollars thirty nine cents, and the commercial industrial personal property rate was thirteen dollars thirty six cents. And the year before that, it was a two cent increase between the two tax rates. And if you remember, the discussion last year was whether to maintain the hundred and fifty percent. And the board's decision last year was do it all three years so we can compare where it's been going. As you may or may not remember, at next year's annual town meeting, there'll be a vote taken on whether or not to continue this. But at least you'll have apples to apples to apples over the three years to compare. So that's why the Board of Assessors voted unanimously to recommend a hundred and fifty percent as well.
Can you tell us, so this will be for the third year of this?
This is the third.
So what are what are the numbers of applicants for the first?
This year, we had twenty four applications, but only twenty three qualified.
And the first year? I'm curious if there's a trend.
The first year, which was F Y twenty four, there were seventeen applicants, and F Y twenty five, there was twenty. So the number has been slightly increasing.
This is something that they need to apply for. It's not an automatic.
Correct. And they also need to make sure that when they file their state income tax return, that they're looking at this circuit breaker and filing the paperwork for that to see if they are eligible to receive that circuit breaker tax credit. There was a special form in the state income tax called Schedule C B for circuit breaker. And we encourage anybody over sixty five, when they do their state income taxes, like January, February, whether they do them themselves or have somebody do them. See if you qualify for that because that's the basic criteria for getting this. And then it follows state law on on also the income limits, asset limit, and how long you have to live in town, but everybody's qualified for that. So people have to live in town for minimum of ten years, not necessarily in the same house, but have lived in town for ten years. Their house and land can't be worth more than one point two million. And then depending on you file singly, had a household or married, there's an income limit that's quite higher than the other statutory ones, which top off at like thirty thousand income. These go up to ninety for a married couple. So that's why you have broad participation. And the the original intent was to give, and I'll put this in quotes, meaningful relief, because the other exemptions by state law are four hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. And this actually, you know, and and I tell people, when the state passed the laws in nineteen seventy and haven't raised the dollar amounts, you know, tax bill might have been two grand and getting a thousand dollars off, you know, half every bill, which is pretty good. But in the last, especially in the last five years with the great run up across the state, where even the governor's housing report last year said basically everybody's doubled in the last five years in their value. This helps people.
Does this preempt that that discount or what?
For the for the other exemptions under state law, it does not.
Okay.
So people can get the community preservation exemption. They can do the senior work law program, and if they're eligible, they can get either the twenty thousand dollar salary, income limit or the thirty thousand dollar limit. The beauty of this is you can actually multiply it. And also, although people don't see it as cash, they're getting a discount on their state income taxes by as much as twenty seven thirty. Not everybody gets it, though. Some people, you know, get a lot less, but at least you know, the ability, as as Sherry said, to knock four thousand dollars off a tax bill. To me, it's the difference between people being able to age out of this town or not being able to live in this town.
Can I ask, when you talked about the hundred and fifty percent exemption?
Yep.
Is it a percent impact on the last?
Yes. Percent for a thousand. So that equated last year for F Y twenty five, the average.
for FY twenty-five, the average, um, value of a single-family home was six hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred. With that extra three cents, it added eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents to the tax bill.
And for the current year, is it too early for people who've applied, or?
People, uh, for these, uh, senior means tested, um, that exemption, uh, that application had to be into the office by August thirty-first, so.
My question is, and that's why you said there were twenty-four this year?
There were twenty-four applicants, but only twenty-three qualified.
Did you do the, I'll be surprised if we didn't, but did you do the numbers if we were to say two hundred percent? What that would, what, what that, what kind of?
Yes, um, Jeremy, did they have the? There's a spreadsheet that I do up, uh, I go all the way out to the two hundred percent, which is the highest that you can go to.
Eighty-eight thousand dollars spread across all the residential taxpayers.
One-third increase, so if we say. About a four percent.
When you talk about eighteen dollars, was the impact of?
Over, over, over the course of a year.
Right, the course of a year. If we, if we did two hundred percent, it would be?
About twenty-four dollars.
Six, six dollars per quarterly bill.
So I guess another consideration is, so, twenty-four, there were twenty-four applicants, twenty-three qualified. Do you have a sense, I know, Kevin, this came up when we were, uh, were looking at this program in the first place, how many additional, um, residents might qualify for this, like, if, could there be, like, next year?
The problem is, the State Department of Revenue used to be able to provide you, um, with how many people in a given community got the CB exemption, they no longer do that. So the last numbers that I got were, I think it was fiscal twenty-three. The problem is getting, a lot of people, quite honestly, in the senior group, don't like the idea of sharing their income, and that prevents some of them, um, not, not a lot of them, but some of them from, um, applying. In, in the town that I'm the assessor, we had a, a couple did not want us to see the info, and it came down to, you qualify for twenty-seven hundred thirty dollars off the tax bill, your info gets read by me personally and locked in a file cabinet for three years, and then gets destroyed, and they decided to not get the exemption because they didn't want anybody to see their finances, and that is not uncommon in people, I would say eighty and up, they, they, you do, that's one factor, the other is just general knowledge. I mean, I will say personally, um, since the death of the town crier, um, much as we do get a monthly newspaper, it's very hard to get things in it, it's very hard to get word out to people other than social media.
Mike, or do you have more?
Actually, what was it, follow-up, so you said you had the data from, I think, fiscal twenty-three?
It was somewhere around, uh,
Seventy-ish?
It was somewhere around seventy or eighty, if I can remember back that far.
It's sort of what I'm remembering, so there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the number for Hollison sticks out in my mind, because I needed to know that, but I do remember it was less than a hundred here.
Right, I remember it being somewhere in like seven hundred eighty range, so I'm just thinking, like, sort of, maximum, in this, so clearly, for this year, the application has already come in.
Yeah.
But potentially, next year, the number could conceivably double, I mean, it sounds like there would.
We would have the opportunity to dial that back, if we would have moved to two hundred, we could always put it back.
Yes.
Well, I know this, it's something that we talked about in a previous year, we wouldn't want to be in a position of lowering somebody's, uh, benefit in the future, I think that was a concern about raising it too much, is that if we then get more applicants next year.
And you'd have to lower it, and, and again, the problem with next year is the people have to vote a town meeting in May before we can offer.
Sort of where I want to, is, this is year three.
Yes.
Three year, I mean, I, I would, I like the idea, since these things you say, keep it one fifty, but I think it's new to the town meeting. Looking at the tax bill realistically, not just this additional, right, debt obligation additional, our CPA additional, and breaking down the resident tax bill.
Yeah.
And just show what the overall picture is, would make a lot of sense, I, I mean, examining maximum users at two hundred percent. Have you, I think that's all information we should have ready for a town meeting.
Yeah.
For the vote, but for this particular discussion, I'd like to recommend, just keep it one fifty, just to have that three-year run range that's consistent, similar with the assessors.
So just a point of information on kind of the three-year progression of this. So this is something I, like, scrambled and got at the end of the presentation last year, and wasn't able to contextualize pretty well. So, circuit breaker, first of all, is a refundable tax credit, so for anyone who's listening, even if you don't have, um, considerable taxable income, still apply for circuit breaker, you can get that money refunded to you.
That, that's an excellent point, if, if you, the state will actually, if people don't make enough money to pay income taxes, but they qualify for that, state will actually send them the check.
So, it's not a deduction, it's a refundable credit, so, apply for it if you think about the other. Um, so for, uh, we're talking about tax year twenty-four in fiscal year twenty-six. So, uh, I just have quick data back to tax year twenty-one, the circuit breaker number, so the, the, um, number to which you're applying your percentage, so, in tax year twenty-one, which is fiscal year twenty-three, that number was one thousand one hundred seventy dollars. In the first year that Menden had the program, tax year twenty-two, the benefit was one thousand two hundred.
If, if I may, Jeremy, the governor's bill last year doubled it, so that's when it, it doubled up to, I think it was twenty, you probably have the number.
Two thousand five hundred ninety.
Two thousand five hundred ninety last year, and now it's going up from there.
So this, the first year when we applied the hundred and fifty percent, we were taking a maximum one thousand two hundred dollar benefit, and we're making an eighteen hundred dollar benefit, and these past few years, when we're applying it to a twenty-five and twenty-seven, we're taking a twenty-five hundred dollar benefit and turning it into a thirty-seven.
Yeah, and, and the state legislature did it, and next year, the state will up it again. So this year, the max is twenty-seven thirty, it might be like twenty-eight hundred, I don't know where they're going, they announced that in January.
A little unfortunate that between years one and two of our special.
I think last year, though, we discussed the idea that we can, based on what the state decides.
Yes.
And just to make more of a monetary target. Talked about that last year. But.
But I like the idea of keeping it at a hundred and fifty percent for three years, we can, you know, we could theoretically, retroactively look, Jeremy, at, had the increase been there in the first year, we could have projected, you know, what it would be over three years, but that is a, a key fact, that it doubled last year, the state legislature actually, uh, doubled that as part of, uh, the governor's, uh, municipal, I can't remember what this one's called, it was the only thing that passed out of our big package last year.
We're still, we're still waiting for the municipal power.
A power.
Yes, thank you.
So, uh, so the bottom line on top is that, uh, a, a small amount of investment has a large payback for some portion of the Menden residents, and it's, uh, it's a, a needed thing to continue, and we're gonna bring this to annual town meeting for another vote in the spring.
Yes.
And at that point in time, we'll have,
Right.
Strong data, and we'll be able to recommend, uh, future state to the, to the community to vote on.
The way, the way the law works is, the voters will be asked, do you want to keep this going for another three years? If they say yes, it goes for three years, and then at that endpoint, there's another vote, that was put into the law, um, because other than the initial town meeting vote to ask the legislature to approve this, that gives the townspeople every three years, an actual vote on whether to keep this going.
Um, great, now, we are doing the voting, and then the Board of Assessors will close.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, I'm in agreement with this Goddard here, I think that, you know, we, we had an intent a couple of years ago, and we should file through on that with a hundred and fifty percent, um, so I'd just be looking for a motion or a discussion as to why not.
I, can I just?
Yep.
I would just like to know the difference, the, the actual difference to the individuals. Just say the number again, between a hundred and fifty to a hundred percent, what do we do for the, those of the seniors?
Okay, um, probably get another. Well, a hundred and fifty percent, if someone received the, the full, uh, circuit breaker credit, would be four thousand ninety-five dollars off of their tax bill.
Versus?
I don't have the two hundred percent.
Well, twenty fifty-nine fifty, two thousand fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents, a hundred and fifty percent, versus two times twenty-seven thirty, so fifty-four sixty.
Significant.
Significant.
But it's also.
Extrapolated.
It, it's also then a significant higher spread across to taxpayers.
Only the pressures that were going on for, for a difference in, you know, it's happened twenty-five bucks, about twenty-five bucks of the average tax bill of everybody else.
Right, but to have Mike's point, where there's a lot of things going on the tax.
Yeah, but we also know that the first year isn't, isn't comparative to the second year, because they changed it in between, so we're gonna have to explain the number anyway.
But, it's already, it already doubled in those three years, so I, I think, I, I feel like, I'm in favor of keeping it at one fifty, because it did recently double, and so I think, um, and also, I, I, I hope that more, uh, people will apply for this in future years. I hope that we can do some outreach, and maybe, I don't know, the new senior outreach coordinator could, like, make an effort. Sherry, we're just Sherry, yeah, so my, that's my hope, is that we'll get more.
I've, I've actually done some, uh, workshops down at the, uh, senior center regarding this, and then anyone that comes into the office, I'm sitting down and going over all the exemptions, including, uh, this one, saying, file that paperwork.
Just for point of reference, Lena, in Holliston, because we got year one was only signed by the governor in November last year, we decided to send a mailer to everybody sixty-five and up, so I'll tell you, two thousand two hundred fifty-two letters went out in January, thirty-four applied.
Okay, wow.
So direct to their house with a letter that actually explained the entire process, that said, do not throw this away, you may be getting money back in your taxes, and two thousand two hundred fifty-two letters, thirty-four applications.
Maybe a, a presentation at annual, annual town meeting next year will get the word out that this is a real viable, um.
Yes.
That might, that might itself get the word out, because my hope is that more people.
Yeah.
Qualify and will take advantage.
I will also tell you, Hopkinton, which has had it the longest of immediate area towns, um, they started out at about thirty people five years ago, and they're only in the mid-forties five years later. So people have to really want to apply for it.
Yeah, I mean, there is some administrative overhead, but, um, it doesn't seem too burdensome, so.
It, it's not, but I'm just giving, you know, even with a direct mail piece there, and I will tell you that whenever anybody comes to the window, we remind them it exists. So.
Kevin, can we get a copy of the letter?
Yes.
All right, so, back to the question at hand, I'd be looking for a motion. Make a motion to approve a hundred and fifty percent means tested senior tax exemption, second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
David Kersey, could you make a motion to adjourn the Board of Assessors?
So moved.
Okay, I will second, uh, roll call voter in favor, Mr. Kersey.
Kersey, aye.
I'm aye.
We are done. Thank you, folks.
It's like he's in the room.
Uh, thank you so much for coming out tonight and, uh, waked through all this, and we're gonna talk about a related program, uh, as soon as you step away.
Well, she stays, I go.
So, uh, number nine is the senior work-off program. And Jen's coming up to talk about the financial perspective or HR perspective of the, uh, senior work-off program, and then maybe will tell us about the people and the.
So I'll, I'll kind of set the stage, and then, um, because there's a lot of folks who are involved in this, including Tracy Icardi, the treasurer collector. So generally, just generally, senior citizens, oh, so, actually, for board documentation, um, we've got to get this great kind of memo piece built into the, uh, agenda creation now, we haven't been utilizing it, um, and I'm gonna start to, because it's native and easier to type in here and stuff, so just kind of be on the lookout for these memos to be popularized with kind of contextual information for items. Um, so this is for senior citizens and military veterans, so of any age, um, can, uh, work in town offices in exchange for abatement of the real estate taxes. So, um, the, uh, proposal, uh, here tonight is to set, um, a, um, a cap, it's not, not in the motion here, uh, but set a cap of fifteen hundred dollars for both veterans and seniors on how much they can make. State law allows seniors to go up to two thousand, um, historically, the cap has been one thousand five hundred, um, in town. Um, the Board of, um, Assessors recommends a twenty thousand dollar overall cap in the program. Um, this is slightly up from the sixteen thousand dollars we had last year. Um, this gets funded out of overlay, so we raise this on levy each year, and we put this into overlay, which is the reserve for abatements and exemptions, um, so this is when we have appeals, um, on property tax assessments for programs like this, and, uh, I was shocked and happy to learn that we have no pending property tax appeals right now, um, so, so that's, that's great. Um, so that exposure out of overlay is minimal, um, and what we need to then continue to raise, so we'll raise something in fiscal twenty-seven to appropriate it to overlay, um, and then the Congress of that, which doesn't often happen, is if we have a surplus in overlay, we can release that and use that to fund the general fund as well, that is. Um, participants paid at fifteen dollars an hour, um, so that means they can work, you know, a hundred hours, um, and, and get fifteen hundred dollars. The way the program is set up, and this has no local control over it, is the benefit that they receive on the property taxes, which is in Q three, the first, um, uh, calculated, not estimated, property tax, um, is net, um, of, uh, tax deductions. So, um, folks in the program last year earned fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, and they earned one thousand, or fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, uh, back against their taxes. Thirteen participants, um, last year, um, we're up a little bit this year, I believe.
Fifteen.
Fifteen this year, um, and these folks, um, you've seen them around town hall and around town, um, so regularly work in the treasurer's office, assessors, collectors, have some projects, um, with, uh, Board of Health, with Conservation Commission, with Select Board to do minutes, um, work with the library, Council on Aging, um, so it touches a lot of parts of town government, um, and these are folks who, um, kind of fill either, um, uh, clerical pieces, organizational pieces, uh, outreach, kind of, uh, reception sort of pieces, uh, folk stuff that, um, we don't have full-time staff to always do, and they're, that a great benefit, and a great many of, of types of projects. So, yeah, um, there's no current cap on participants, and this proposal doesn't have a cap on participants, um, so not everyone does all their hours.
But, right, so there's sort of like an artificial cap based on how many people are in, right, because not everybody's gonna get the same amount.
Um, so, that was actually more than I meant to say, sorry, Amy. Uh, so, uh, if, if you all want to talk about your constituent pieces of that program, and kind of expand a little bit more.
You want to talk first, Tim?
Sure, um, so, my role is, is very minimal, actually, in, in the program. Um, Amy sends the, the information to me, I, we do have to do a query checks on everybody's, on query check, um, then they fill out their paperwork to get added to the payroll, uh, is my piece of it. What I did do a couple of years ago was, um, set it up in the payroll, so, it used to work out that they would get a check, they'd have to come into town hall, they'd have to sign the check over to, to the, uh, collector's office. So what we do now is, we've set it up that it's seamless, where the town receives the check at the third party, um, similar to, like, when we're paying out to Empower, or even to Child Support or things like that, we have them set up that way. And then what Tracy will do in her office is, she gets the check, she gets the list, and she does all the deductions. And we, this year, I think, finally figured out the sweet spot in sort of the timeline of getting everything done. Amy got me all of the hours by.
September fifteenth.
September fifteenth, we ran it through the payroll so that Tracy was able to get it in by October first, so they'll see that in their November first taxes, so that's kind of, that's my role in the.
There, there is one wrinkle that I just want to bring up, in case you've heard this from residents, um, if you pay your property taxes through, uh, your mort, through an escrow with your mortgage, the timing on when they do their escrow calculations, and when they do their drawn-out is completely out of our hands, and so when we send over the final tax bills for Q three to Q four, then maybe after they did your escrow calculation for the year, and that's not going to be immediately, um, recognizable to you in your monthly mortgage payment, which includes your escrow payment for, for your real estate taxes, and that's something, unfortunately, that we can kind of give you all the information and tools, but individual residents have to work that out with their mortgage service, so that's.
So there may be a lag for those residents, or when the mortgage company.
Right, and if you're expecting that to be there, it might not be there, that might be concerning to you. And we pay out every quarter or once a. And we pay out every quarter or once a year.
Once a year, we do it once a year. And we also found out this year, and I, again, not knowing if it's happened in years past, but since I've been involved in the program, that the, it goes to the property. I mean, you might be able to explain that a little bit better. So if you're selling your house, it, the, the amount of the, the deduction on your taxes goes to the property.
Just so you, you work, so if you work your hours in fiscal twenty twenty-five, it ends at June thirtieth. That's the hours that Amy says she gets over by September. And then that's reflected on your third quarter fiscal twenty-six bill. So you can work for the full year and then sell your house, you know, nine, ten months after you last worked. And then it's, it's up to your agents to figure it out on the, on the statement of cash flows or whatever it's called at the end, the ins and the outs on, on who gets a credit and where. But yeah, that is another thing you have to be.
Tracy works on that, she's sending the letters to the, to the attorneys, the closing attorneys, so.
And we put that in, I think, the, the new application, stated right in there how, how it works.
Yes. So when we have, we have some turnover in the program. So from last year to this year, we have, four folks did not sign up again because two of them did sell their homes. And two of them, for whatever reason, it didn't, you know, wasn't the right fit for them, either physically or otherwise. But this year, we, we, so we lost four people, this year we've gained six more. So we've had.
Or out of two, or, okay.
Yes, thirteen to fifteen. Yes, yes, so, so it's nice to have some, some new energy. I think you might have seen them again around town hall. I know they've been covering Sherry's office, the clerk's office.
They're there for your lunch fest.
Our, our thing is to try to find meaningful work for them to do. I mean, I think I've brought things up from the Senior Center. I think the treasurer's will bring things over to your office. We're trying to, you know, if there's, you know, many little things that need to be done, putting, you know, stamps on envelopes or stuffing envelopes, you know, treading documents, things that we just, we don't have the time to do, or our, our time is better served elsewhere. So looking for more things for people to do. We do have, you have people, people at the library, the library folks are very busy, people at the Senior Center are very busy. There's just a lot happening there. So, but we'd like to have more departments, you know, requesting the service.
Have you reached out, like, do you have a form letter or you're, is Jen putting a lunch and learn? How to have an intern? Yeah, I mean, these are, people might not be thinking this was like having an intern essentially, is what you're talking about, in your area, might not be something leaders are thinking about, you might just need to nudge them.
So we did talk to, I'm not sure if they reached out to you, Amy, but there was talk about the, the garden at the Senior Center, or the landscaping of the Senior Center, somebody was very interested in that. Now that we have a new grounds person, we're gonna try to coordinate with them to let them utilize.
Yeah, flowers and beds are great.
So the senior workers, that's been approved?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I did have somebody come on board, and what about the Tri-Valley program?
That.
No, because it's a third party? Okay, so we have a lunch program at the Senior Center and it involves seniors. We just had our, our training last month. And so one of our new volunteers, she, she came on board as a volunteer. And we were a little bit surprised when she came to the training and she said, well, can I do, you know, can I do the Tri-Valley lunch program through the work program? Can I do the gardening through the work program? That's, I brought that to Jen's attention and, but Tri-Valley, again, it's, these volunteers, they belong to Tri-Valley. They also work under our, our, our facility, but, so Tri-Valley captures their hours and things like that. So thank you for letting me know.
But I mean, they've worked, I know that they've worked in the Conservation Commission with Isabella, they, I think the Board of Health has utilized the services as well. Gone forward for some minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that she's a very, a very, I don't want to say gifted person, but definitely keep her in mind. And then we have Joel, who's been working for the, with the clerk. I mean, he's loved to utilize him elsewhere, doing, I don't know if we've gotten invited to do minutes at the, at the FinCom. I mean, he's got a finance background, he'd be happy to do something like that, but.
We'd love to have somebody creatively come up with some free ideas and prove in this space that we're sitting in right now. You know, the creative people who have insight into how to do that sort of stuff would be interesting. And decorations are another like thing that we probably need in town hall and like going through our archives to find interesting pieces. You know, that's all stuff across all of our places, yes.
Now, I have a question about who qualifies for this, like what are the?
I didn't bring an application with me.
Oh, so it's what, sixty?
Sixty and over.
Sixty and over for the seniors and then veterans of any age for the veteran.
So starting at age sixty, and there's no like residency requirement. I mean, some of, so like that they, I'm sorry, the number of years in town. I know like for the means tested, they had to have been in town for ten years. So here, somebody could move to mend in and qualify for this.
Yes.
And there is no means testing for the program.
Right, okay. So there's no means testing, so this is just anyone who's sixty can, and who's.
And for a married couple, it's, the cap is still the fifteen hundred. So they could put their hours, they.
Oh, so it's, okay, per, per call. Okay, that's good.
But I will tell you, these, these seniors, they want to work. They, they really enjoy it, they, you know, you know, they very, very well, very rarely do they call in sick, put it that way. And they look forward to their working in their shifts. They just, they want to be, you know, useful and do something meaningful, so.
Thank you. So there's, there's three aspects to this motion, two that are in here, about the cap of twenty thousand dollars, the per person cap of fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, and the hour rate. Yeah, we.
That's up four thousand dollars.
And we've got two more participants, so at the cap would be three thousand dollars more. And I don't, I don't, Amy has it here, I forgot to bring it up with me, but you know, there are some folks, out of this thirteen, or last year, some folks on five hundred dollars, nine hundred, not everyone. Most people, I should, not everyone.
We have one at six hundred and seven, three hundred and fifteen, seven hundred and thirty-eight.
Yeah.
I know, it, it, right, bumped right up to the limit last time.
Yeah.
Really, like, what, like two cents?
Well, the limit was fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah.
That's why I asked the question.
So yeah, that was the, that's why we didn't ask for seventeen thousand.
Yeah, so I'd be looking for a motion.
So I move to approve the fiscal twenty-six year payment of growing up to twenty thousand dollars from overlay to be paid to the senior veterans at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour.
Second.
Cap to fifteen hundred per property.
Captain fifteen hundred per property.
So would you like to second that one more time, please?
Second.
Thanks. And so any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Thank you guys so much for all the work you do for these people.
You know, what they do for us.
It's a great program.
All right, I'm gonna skip some things.
So you want me to?
Oh, actually, well, yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay, I can move away, I can.
I'm.
Go back to my.
Because I want to have a meaningful discussion, I'm gonna jump to the seventh, number seventeen, Animal Control for one hundred and six Millville Road. And so we have. Yeah, is there anybody on for number sixteen? It's the Civil War Monument Relocation, we're gonna pass that over right now? There is not, so we're passing that over. And that's because we do not have the information we need from the state, they haven't come to meet with Jeremy until next week.
Yeah, they told us the deadline was October fifteenth, after the engineer came to the site and gave us our plans. And then we just have the engineer said, I don't have it. So we don't, we don't have anything.
So hopefully the first week of November for that meeting, we'll have this back on here again.
How hard was that?
Apparently not very hard, yeah. I mean, I don't think they gave us a consequence for not meeting it, but we did feel like we had to. And so. A state. I think they're busy.
Yeah. A lot of room to punch.
All right, so, so yeah, so we'll get back to that, Jeremy, I'll make sure that meeting happens. All right, so on to number seventeen, which is Animal Control. So would the, do we have someone here for one oh six Millville?
And then we have the Animal Control Officer as well, and Chief Kersey online.
Okay.
I believe Corporal Erskine.
Do you guys mind coming on up? Just gonna wait for the stairs to stop. Right, thanks for joining us, chief. So I'm just gonna start with Animal Control, could you just give us a summary of what's going on?
So we're having some issues over one oh six Millville Road. Bye, Kevin Sullivan, Blackstone Valley Animal Control. We're having an issue with property over one oh six Millville Road, specifically the tenants currently residing there, which is Elizabeth and Julia Bonner. Some of our biggest issues we're having is repeat and excess number of leash law violations. We're having repeat violations for unlicensed dogs. We have an illegally running, operating kennel. From there, we have issues where they have accumulated excess number of horses, cows, goats, inducks, all from auction without health certificates. From there, I issued a cease and desist on the operation of a kennel. They've received multiple violations for leash law violations. They have received multiple violations and fines for operating the kennel. They received a state quarantine order from the Department of Agriculture, which I supplied the town administrator, that they complete disregard for. At a bit of a loss right now on what exactly, you know what I mean, how we move forward. We have recent cruelty charges filed against them for a condition in which they were maintaining their animals. And then even as of this past weekend, we had loose horses again, on two, separate, two different, over two days. And then I'm not quite sure if it's currently occurring or not, but on Facebook currently, as of like ten minutes ago, another loose horse posted. To date, I don't think we've had any loose horses in town outside of the Bonners in the last six months. It's just here looking for some assistance with our current situation that we have going on from the Board of Commissioners. Like I said, we do cease and desist September to the Bonners, they've ignored the cease and desist. And just a little history, I first had our, we had our first interaction with the Bonners, I believe in June. And it was for their unleashed dogs. At that point in time, the dogs were in our care, custody and control, so they had to come claim the dogs. It wasn't our first report of loose dogs in the area. Also, you can go back on social media, we had a bunch in the area, we could just never locate slash contain the dogs. And we never knew where they were coming from. On a couple of occasions, we had checked with Osbed and Biscuit, and he had claimed not at all from them, but he also wasn't aware they were from. So in June, we got the first dogs. At that point in time, none of the dogs were licensed. At that point in time, the Bonners claimed that they thought it fell under a kennel license for someone that they were staying with, which didn't have a kennel license. So they were informed that they were gonna have to supply proof of vaccines and their license airport on, so they informed us that they had. At that point in time, they went and licensed four dogs, they claimed their other two dogs, or they claimed the dogs from us, and they departed ways. And again, I had never, at that point in time, still I'd never met the Bonners in person. From, they worked with the ACO banner. From there, beginning in July, I was actually on vacation, I received a complaint. None of us complained, we received stating that the Bonners were charged with animal cruelty in another town. And essentially, they were currently on probation. In the state of mass, once you've been charged with animal cruelty, you're not supposed to still go license the dog for five years. I reached out to the current barn owner, who we had had other dealings with on set on our own, who stated that she didn't know and she's gonna look into it. Shortly thereafter, actually, we received a phone call from the Bonners, who told me that, yes, they were charged, they were on probation, and that they were allowed to keep their four dogs. So I just asked them to send me the documentation they had. We found out that it went through Stoughton District Court. I reached out to Stoughton District Court. And then at that point in time, part of their probation was that they were required to make sure the dogs were licensed, up to getting vaccines. They were following the leash laws and that they were allowed to keep their four dogs. They claimed they had no other animals at that point in time. But they were staying at, again, a barn with additional horses for someone who had a stable permit. So everything continued to go on. Over that, from that point on, we had a couple more incidents of loose dogs in the area, not able to contain them. Fast forward to June, there was a disturbance, or, sorry, not June, I have it in front of me, I sent you the report, August. The issue started with her and the person she was staying with. And then it kind of all went downhill from there with the number of, you know, leash law violations, the number of times the dogs were loose. And then it, from there, in, again, I think September the thirteenth, they attended an auction, the Bonners attended an auction where they purchased a large number, number of livestock and brought them back down. On the fifteenth, we visited the barn with MSPC and the Department of Agriculture. At that point in time, the Bonners supplied proof that they had hired an attorney to make petition to Stoughton District Court for early release of their probation for good behavior. Stoughton District Court, they judged there, approved the release. So they're now allowed to maintain animals again. With that being said, they per, they obtained these animals, the livestock animals, on the thirteenth of September, after the current tenant of the property, who they were subleasing from, had vacated the barn because she was in the middle of an eviction herself. The Bonners, from what we understand, at this point, had no place to go. But they just purchased, from what we were told at the time, eleven horses, two cows, seven goats. The, and it's just kind of like, it's spiraling out of control from here. This past Saturday, we got, again, along with the numerous other issues that I've given you guys in writing, this Saturday, we got called to the house when a family member of theirs asked for a welfare check. Upon showing up on the property, for the welfare check, police called in Animal Control again for a dog improperly tethered without shelter. While there, they went to go knock on the door, and they found unsanitary living conditions where a dog was living amongst trash and excessive amounts of feces all over the place. And that's in, off of the, that, those incidents, animal cruelty charges have been filed by the police. It's, it's out of control. The number of, I mean, they, even now, they're still maintaining quite a few horses over there. They have zero, almost zero fencing, there's permanent fencing on the exterior of the property. As of Saturday night, they were using an old car to block the driveway with chicken wire fencing. And then by Saturday evening, the horses were loose running down Millville Road. Sure everyone's aware of, on Millville Road, it's on the bend that people travel way too fast on. The Bonners are technically, according to the attorney, squatters of the property. They have no insurance, you know what I mean, amongst, you know, everything else. It's just, there's, there's so much risk here and they have complete disregard. Along with the quarantine order, they violated the quarantine order dozens of times now, but from the state. They were, we have text messages through from between Ms. Julia Bonner and the third-party source, that they hid horses in Hope Dale. We then checked out the barn in Hope Dale with Department of Ag, where we found the horses. They've been, Department of Ag stopped in last week, they had sold two horses, refused to give the location of the two horses they sold. They brought in another horse from, you know, another location. It's just, it's on and on and on, it's just. It's just, it's on and on and on. It's just a solid disregard. Every step of the way. Um, we try to give them this, you know, steps needed in order to do this legally in the correct way. It feel like you just, you get yes, man, yes, 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 and then they just do whatever they want. And again, I, I don't know what to say. You know what I mean? The, you know, she's always, she's been present with me. Um, since we went there with the state. I had actually my very first time meeting Miss Bonner. Was actually in the driveway over on Lovell Street when we got a call for a loose dog. At that point in time, I had never met her. I had pulled in the driveway behind her. Um, got out, and then as I was getting out of my car, walking over towards the porch, she was coming down the stairs with the dog. Um, the couple that had found the dog up on the porch had told me that they, who's the owner of the dog. I asked her if she was Elizabeth Bonner. She said, yes. I said, can you meet me in my car? She said, who are you? And I said, I'm Kevin Sullivan, Animal Control. Um, she put the dog in the backseat, jumped in her car, yelled at me that she wasn't taking any violations from me. Drove over the lawn of the people who had found the dog, went around my vehicle. I exited, um, their driveway, drove over towards the barn, pulled into the driveway of the barn. She continued straight. But I was gonna fill out the violation, just leave it on their door. Before I could even leave the violation on the door, but her scheme called me to the Bonners over at the police station filing a complaint. I just, you know, I mean, that was my very first interaction ever meeting her. Um, since then, since we went back with the MSPCA, she's been pleasant to deal with, but like, still refuses to acknowledge anything she's doing. Originally, when we were first there, like I said, she had the original four dogs. She has since then acquired five more along with all the livestock. So there's three puppies, there is a foster dog, and then there's another dog as well.
Alright, so Corporal. I'll get you in just a second, please, sir. Um, Corporal, you just confirm what the animal control officer just stated, as it pertains to the, then in the police department?
Right, absolutely. There's, um, again, we work closely with animal control lots of times. These calls come straight in through dispatch, prompting a police response oftentimes because um, an animal might be in the road, creating a road hazard, um, safety issue. So lots of times, it's a dual response with both the police department and, uh, animal control. I believe, um, we have roughly 29 animal-related calls. In one way or another, whether that's for a loose dog in the road, a loose cow. Or some sort of assistance that's needed with an animal control response. We confirm that eight calls have been, uh, since May, up until now, eight have been for loose dogs. 11 were for loose cows and four were for loose horses. Um, so as, uh, Mr. Sullivan explained, uh, recently, charges were filed. Can't speak much on behalf of that again, cause, um, it's an open case. But other than that, um, what Mr. Sullivan's explaining is.
Right, uh, Ms. Bonner, do you wanna?
Yes, absolutely. Elizabeth Bonner, 106 Millville. Um, unfortunately, some of the information that Kevin has given you now is incorrect. The long and short of this is, we moved here temporarily because we're trying to move to our home in Canada. Somebody put on social media that my daughter and I were, um, convicted of animal cruelty. We were not. We got off of probation, not because of good behavior, because we were getting death threats from PETA, MSPCA, strangers. Um, I have filed with Corporal Ensken, the day that Kevin's talking about. I wasn't going to, I didn't think I should have to take a fee for when a neighbor called and said, your dog's here. Um, I did drive around him when he blocked me in the driveway and he was not nice. And he said, are you Elizabeth? I said, yes. And he said, come with me. That's how it was presented. I felt threatened. I went to the, my home. He was pulled in behind me. I did not feel comfortable. I drove around. Blackstone leveled, like kept doing the circle until he left. He didn't leave and I went to the police station. Um, I've asked several different times, who does Kevin report to? And when I came here today, because they said he reports here, they threw it back on the police station because he has a lot of inaccurate information and he comes at you. And it's upsetting me. It's upsetting my daughter. When I moved here in May, I went with Alan and I licensed the dogs, my four dogs. So that's not true, that I waited to license them. I licensed them right away. Um. My first interaction with Kevin over the phone was because he listened to something on social media. He called the woman that I was renting from at the time, told her she had to get rid of us because we were not allowed to have dogs. He threatened to come and take my four dogs that I do have, one of them being 16 years old. And then I recently said to him, you were wrong about that. And he said, cause he listened to somebody on social media. And I said, you were wrong about that. And he acknowledged, and then you never heard from me again. Like, he didn't say, I'm sorry. Or anything. He said, and then you never heard from me again. I feel harassed by Kevin. I feel like he's financially trying to break me, especially when he just asked me the other day. I'm being nosy. Where do you get your money from? He has two of my dogs that he's not willing to return. One of them has seizures. I've gone down and asked if I could visit with them and he refused in person. I asked him again on the phone. He refused. I've reached out to him via text message and voicemail with no response. I went to the police station to say this man's not getting back to me. Um, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place here. In reference to the old car that I moved. We moved that car. It's a 1976 Cadillac Deville. It's going to be in a movie at the end of the month. And we moved it because the acorns from the tree were actually digging it. And my car is black, has a bunch of dings from the tree. We're not using that as some type of fencing. Um. Kevin's informing that the neighbor across the street is sending, is taking videos and that he's sending them to Kevin via email. Of whatever. Again, he, this is emotionally upsetting. It's physically upsetting. We had purchased horses, two cows, and goats from an auction in Connecticut. We are in constant contact with the federal agent. The auction that sold the horses to us were supposed to have a vet on premise, on the premises. They did not, we did not know that they were supposed to have a, um, vet. Back in May, I gave Miranda Silva, who used to live at the, uh, the house. I gave her $14,000 cash to secure this apartment for six months because we're trying to move to Canada. She took my money, never paid the landlord. She was evicted. We are not squatters. I have a text message from the lawyer. We have permission to stay there till November 1st. The lawyer and his client understand that we were screwed in plain English. So we are there until November 1st and it was a revenge call that this woman, Miranda, made against us. She said she wanted to make sure that, because she had a bunch of animals herself, she wanted to make sure that, um, if any animals were left behind, that she wasn't charged with abandonment. None of that would have happened. It was a revenge call that she did. And everybody has acknowledged this, that has come from the police department.
Alright, so, so let's, uh, just put the dogs aside for a second.
Put the dogs?
Let's just put the dogs aside for just one sec.
Yeah.
If we take the dogs out of the picture, we still have a lot of instances with very dangerous, large animals. Are they your animals? Do these incidents really occur?
They are.
And like, what, you know? Is, I don't think there will be a good answer as to why multiple horses and cows are gonna be out on the road. Like, they're different than dogs. You know, they, they don't run away, per se, and that's, you know, they're either in their area or they're not. And so, you know, if we just take the dogs out for a second, just talk about the livestock. Um, if you're moving and trying to leave by November 1st, purchasing a bunch of animals in a place that you're double subletting seems to be a complex issue and then not taking care of them also seems to be a problem. So is that not all happening? And like, the police and, and the animal control are not telling us the truth about that, or is that happening? And, you know, that's something that we really ought to be dealing with. Cause if we just take the dogs out of the way, there seems to be a lot of problems going on here.
So Miranda, the woman that I subleased from, the, and the owner of the property had no idea that my daughter and I were living there. Um, again, she took my money and pocketed it. On three occasions, and one time I, I had, um, two officers come down. Either she was letting our horses out, or her friend Carrie, who I have a report about her stealing stuff from us. Um, let the animals out. And I'm Miranda's 14-year-old daughter, when the dogs were out, this was on three occasions between the horses and the dogs. Opened up the side fence where I put my dogs. And they got out. So there were two occasions that night.
All of the problems are because of the situation you're in, not because you purposely let these animals roam free. Is that your saying?
I would never let any animal purposely, purposely roam free.
So if we accept that, it still isn't right. But if we accept that, um, and then move back to the dogs. Uh, I find my police force, our police force here, pretty trustworthy. If they're filing something against you. Um, do you, are you saying that that's not, that didn't happen to your pets? That your pets were living in good condition and they were being treated properly and they are mishandling this? Is that what you're saying?
My animals come before me. My animals eat before me. I'm in the process of moving, so anybody here could come to my house right now and it's completely trashed. Like, I'm trying to be organized with my packing. Um, so yes, the house is in disarray.
Disarray is different than not livable conditions for an animal, though.
And I, I wouldn't say they're not livable conditions. I have three puppies that are not potty trained. So when they came, there was poop and pee, I guess, on the floor when they came. I was not there when they came.
And the two animals that you have right now, are those the animals that were discovered during this situation where they were?
No.
That, why are those two animals?
So those two animals are currently being held under, so this Bonner started accruing fines under the confinement law. Um, under master general law. And on third violation, it allows animals to be held pending compliance. Um, this Bonner has not complied with any of the previous violations, has not, uh, requested court appearances um, within the 21-day period. All of those are currently being filed by animal control, medic police. Um, along with that, um, since we have the dogs as stray again. She's actually had three more violations of her other dogs running free.
Which is related to this person coming and opening your gates, or this is just like another instance?
This is just another instance. Actually, police arrived on scene. And on a couple of occasions, she's actually, they were seen following their dogs up the driveway of Osbed and Biscuit. At well after the other tenant had already vacated the property.
Okay, so they're close by to that kennel?
You know, directly across the street.
Oh, they're, oh, it's the barn area. I want to clarify, said, what I heard was that a third party, the, the, the original the person you subletted from
Yes.
let the animals loose.
She has.
They are no longer present.
No.
So, and, and as of what date? When we, it, approximately, because I think what I heard is, it's like 23 reports since May forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
29.
Yeah, so the, when did Miranda?
They, they vacated the barn the 1st of September. They completely vacated the house, I think, the 1st of October, before the 1st of October.
Of this year.
Of this year.
And her friends were coming back stealing stuff. We have a report with the Mendon Police and letting the horses out. We have a police report, um, or the police came to the house and I can't remember his name, but I could tell you.
What you're saying is, all the reports of animals being loose are due, your, your statement is due to uh, the previous tenant coming?
Not all, not all.
Okay, and, and of the ones that they're not responsible for, are there pending violations or fines that need to be paid?
Yes.
And that seems to be around $1,800 or so, I saw something.
$1,800 in those fines, and then she's up, she's up to over $24,000 in fines for the kennel law violations, because for some reason, after everything was said and done, she went and acquired five more dogs.
I cannot get a kennel license because I don't own the property. I've checked with the Jao Nato is the gentleman that owns the property. I can't even put cameras up and people are stealing stuff. I've slept in my car. The police can verify this because people are coming on the property and stealing stuff.
You're, you're saying you can't get a kennel license, you don't know the property, you got five more dogs. Without a kennel license knowingly.
I'm not 100% positive, but I was told that there's because, um, two of the, three of the puppies are under a certain age, that they wouldn't have fallen under kennel license yet. I don't know.
We haven't yet adopted the new MGL kennel laws that's going to come at the local town meeting.
Yeah.
So, uh, those specific rules are not currently on our bylaws.
They are not, is that what you said?
They are not, and see, voted is.
So, so you have to be, are voting them in effect, but they undermass general law. Any dog over the age of three months is still counted on. Still counted on the kennel license.
Okay.
And that's under mass general law, and that took effect in October of '24.
How old are the puppies?
What?
How old are the puppies in question?
I think they're four months at the time we were told.
Yes, September. So they were born July 1st. Um, and one of them went yesterday to be stayed, so I don't know how old. I think that's six months.
So the personal kennel, section 8.12. Collection of more than four dogs, three months old or older. Kept in a single ownership and private use, uh, that's described as a private kennel, under our bylaws currently.
Current bylaws, okay. Alright, there's a lot going on here.
Yes.
Uh. Are you staying in the town of Mendon after November?
I'm trying to get to Canada, but we keep getting these charges, so it's, and waiting for.
Well, it doesn't seem like these are going to be dropped, so.
So I'll be homeless as of November 1st.
But it sounds like you've been adding to your problems by ignoring, even if it was wrong, by ignoring advice to stop doing what you're doing. And I under, like, this sounds like quite a predicament you're in. I, 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 you know, I'm empathetic to have been lost, you know, lost all that money to you having to move, but adding additional animals when you, when, when you are told not to, is just blatantly going against the requests of the town. Uh, it doesn't matter who represented the town. If it were animal control or police. They, there are a lot of data here saying that they asked you to stop. Um, and so, uh, you know, the, the bedside manner of the animal control officer is, is not something that's required. And so we hope that while he's out there, he's being pleasant. But, you know.
Can you tell me who he does report to?
So, yeah, I want to set some context. So we're in an intermunicipal agreement with, um, a number of municipalities.
Six.
Blackstone, Douglas, Hope Dale, Mendon, Millville.
And we're overseen by Uxbridge Police Chief, Keith Mobbinny. So he's also where the current on-bunk.
Yep, so he primarily reports to Oxford Police Chief. Complaints, uh, can be raised in a forum like this, like we're doing right now. And then any particular complaints about the ACO should be submitted to the Uxbridge Police Chief. Um, and then I will argue that with input from town officials, is how our intermunicipal agreement. Um, and so that's the kind of actions available to folks, and then the actions available to this board, as I understand it. The ACO, the animal control officer has issued a cease and desist for, um, operation illegal kennel. Kennel, that license. Um, and. kennel without a license, um, and, um, looking for this board to sustain that cease and desist, and issue their own cease and desist, um, for the operation of a kennel without a license at one oh six. Um, that's the kind of, as I understand, that's the narrow ask of the board.
The narrow ask of the board.
Um, and then the rest of it is a kind of a, a public education and, um, kind of notification. This has been an issue for folks to bring it to your attention and to discuss in a public forum. I just wanted to make sure we knew about the narrow.
And on a bigger aspect, and I don't know how the board feels about this, so I was also requesting the board contemplate the option of a cease and desist on the operation of an animal facility on the property, and re, and requires them to remove any livestock from the property, as there is not proper fencing on the property. And along with that, the amount of, uh, risk they've currently caused to both people in the area of the property, along with other farm owners, um.
Are they currently, I mean, are they legally allowed to have those animals? Like, so like, would it cease and desist if they're not legally allowed to have them, like, what's the?
Honestly, it's, it's more teeth when we go to court.
Okay.
We aren't legally allowed to have them.
So.
That's the police chief would like to say.
So I've kind of sat back and just listened to it. That's, uh, there, there's a lot more going on here, I think, than, um, there, there, there are some misstatements here. Um, so, this came to my attention about two weeks ago, Kevin. So, two weeks ago came to my attention that Kevin won, pursued us for all fines. Um, immediately, him and I spent an hour together, I got a couple of persons involved, um, and independently looked at this, and then brought it right to the town administrator. Um, after my rapid review of it, we, the police have acted appropriately, the way I act with citizens here. Anybody that's a resident, I think I've made it known that we're community-oriented, we're gonna work with you. We're gonna try to get things to a point where we can try to resolve something peacefully. I think the police department has gone above and beyond to try to work this out peacefully. We're at the point now where I think, I encourage you to issue everything the, um, animal control officer wants to, liability-wise. Because if something happens, um, at least we've tried everything we can to prevent the liability of us if a cow gets hit.
Yeah, that's the big thing.
It, in the misstatements that I'm talking about is, I understand you try to do everything you can to rectify this issue, but as of today, and from two weeks ago, um, especially two weeks ago, the neighbors in that area have, have cows in their backyards that have been loose. I drove down the streets and had to help the officers retrieve that cow down the street. Um, I woke up in my own house and have a cow in my backyard, my dog barking at it, and then going into the next yard, and the next yard. So I've seen this, this isn't a Facebook lore, this happened, it continues to happen. I spoke to the Hawks today, I don't know why there is still a cow with their herd. Um, you have an animal that belongs to you that is on the Hawks' property, threatening their business and their livelihood. And it's been there for weeks, I don't know what you're doing to get that. I think at this point, the town needs to take action, say, it can't happen anymore. And the police department's gonna take action from this point forward, to make sure it doesn't happen anymore. You, you're now encouraging other people's rights to have businesses, farms, and livelihoods. It, it's not okay, in the conditions that the officers found, it's not some books and some packages. There, there's feces everywhere, it's not from a dog pooping from the afternoon. I, I have animals, and everybody hears animals, we know when there's an accident. The officer's a trade, and we know when this condition's that aren't appropriate, we're at that place right now. We need to do something to work with you to get this out. I don't want to be the bad guy and have to charge every time we go down there, but at that point, well, we need to do something. Either you surrender the animals and get rid of the animals, or you need to do something, because as the chairman said, you're not making your situation any better, you're complying, it, it's gonna keep getting worse. Yeah, Mike, go now.
Yeah. Chief, I, I know there've been times in the past, at least one time, but more than one time, when other authorities have come into the town, and there's been inappropriate issues with livestock and, and birds.
We don't have that option anymore, but unfortunately, with budget cuts across the state, they don't come in anymore. Their eight to four agency, MSPCA, used to come in and used to take over it, they're putting more, like everything else.
Um, but here's, here's my point, what you're describing is the health.
Yeah. You know, ten years ago, with the MSPCA, when it came in, it already shut down to call your animals. Because of the budget cuts, they're not doing it, they're putting it in our hands now. So, these are the actions we're taking.
So what are, so what are our options to have to rectify the situation? It's, has the, has the board helped me down here and looked at it?
I think this is the first option, cease and desist, to go forward there, and like, the board of health hasn't involved, so the town administrator can inform me that right after I met with him, you know, with the board of health. Um, we're on the same page to start moving in this direction, um, but we're gonna have to take it over. The police department's gonna take over the investigation cost of it. MSPCA isn't coming over anymore.
Well, either way.
Yeah.
That, that's the only way to rectify this, to, is to remove the animals to a safe place, and then, and, and you're.
That's an about.
You have to leave charges.
Yes.
And what's your plan with you, what, what's your plan with the animals?
We were taking them to Canada with us, but we have a trailer. Oh, and we have not sold any horses, I don't know where you got that from, we have not sold any horses. Um, I would like to say, I spoke with Peter yesterday, my daughter and I were down there yesterday, and you can't chase a cow, there's emus. Um, so I said to him, oh, is she approachable yet? He said, no, not yet, but she's getting there, and from, according to Erin and Peter, they don't have a problem with this, this is what they're telling me, my daughter, I don't know what they're telling other people. They said, they're trying to get her to think that she's like part of their herd, and you can't, like, go up and rope her, because we, we have a roper that could do that, but that's not gonna work. And he said, she's gotta get comfortable, and they're gonna try to corral her.
Then, I talked to him today, they're, and I'm making an issue of it, but they're not happy that it's there. They're not happy that it's been there for that long, and they don't want to own it, they don't want you to take off, they don't want to own it.
No, we would.
They don't want to deal with that.
We would.
But if you can't catch it, what are we gonna do? If you haven't hired a professional, go catch it, we've gotta figure out something to get that guy. That just shows something, like, your animal's been somewhere else for weeks.
Right, and we're in contact with them almost on a daily basis, and it's a cow, and they know cows, and they're like, they're telling us not to worry about it, they're working with us, we're working with them. This is from them.
I, I think, I think you're taking what they're saying as, they don't mind it, but they don't want it, so that's a nice way of saying, get it out of here.
Mr. Chairman, Michael, thank you, but I understand conversation people have back and forth, the bottom line is, you know, there, there are, there are animals that don't belong here, and we need to have them removed.
Yeah, so, I, I'm worried about, I'm worried about November first. Uh, I, uh, I'm in, I'm in support of everything that, you know, we've talked about here, and animal control and, uh, all that. I want to just pause for a second and talk about this property has, long-term, been an issue for this town. And, you know, even after we resolve this, are we still gonna have issues on this property? Because the owner's gonna be just renting it out to anybody for any situation, and not paying attention, and is there anything that we can do about that? So that, um, you know, the, somebody, the owner is responsible for allowing this to occur if it's not your property, and, um, you are responsible for it occurring just because you live there. So, there's multiple responsibilities going on here, and, and I don't, it, it it shouldn't all fall, uh, on just this one person, there's wrongdoings happening in other spaces.
One, who leases, the, the owner.
He didn't know we were there, the owner.
Well, they leased it, then they subletted it, and, you know, um.
But the owner's doing his part to remove the people, so I think he's doing.
All I'm saying is, the focus right now of these animals aren't supposed to be there, they're not being properly cared for, they're not being secured, so they need to be removed. So the point is, and, and my, my understanding is this cease and desist gives us the legality to remove them, because you can't control them. You've already just admitted that one of your cows is, if Peter Hawks is fired, and you can't bring it back. And you have, you have dogs, you have horses, you have cows, and you have no control. So, that's your responsibility, and I'm just not sure what the authority of this board is to do it, but, but they need to be removed.
I think this is the first step, get the board to help them out, and then, like I said, it, it's not gonna be, we, since May, twenty-nine calls for service, more than any, any other business or resident in this town that we've been devoted to, to Millwall Road for, for animal complaints, it's ridiculous, we're at the point where it's gonna be criminal charges at this point, and, and you can't just keep doing this.
I would love, I would like to mention, we're only just over a year out from MSPCA ceasing or removing two additional horses in Canton, Mass, um, and her being heard for similar complaints. Uh, and then also, when falling off with Canton Animal Control, um, they had said that in their entire career as animal control over twenty years.
All right, so.
They had never had.
Have a ton of information.
Okay, can I, can I?
Wait, 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 before I even hit the gavel.
I, I raise my hand.
I just want Mr. Goddard to speak, and then we're gonna wrap this up, because there's plenty of information here, and I don't think we need to hear a lot.
I just wanted to bring it back, so the narrow focus is a cease and desist, possibly two cease and desists basically. So what's the practical ramifications? If we take that vote, what's the next step? And I'll look to Chief Percy to say, or, or the ACO to say, we do that, then what? Instead of going after, I think, what Mr. Marolla was saying, is like, what's next?
If we issue this, then what's our responsibility?
Yeah, I'm more curious, well, action to be taken, because we can take a vote, if, what does that do to resolve?
We're gonna, once again, contact you and try to work this out, and at that point, if we can't work it out, we're gonna start looking at warrants to seize the animals. And not that we want to do that, I don't want to do that, but we're gonna.
When you're saying, when you're saying animals, are you just talking about the dogs?
If it's a cease and desist for the whole property, it depends what they issue, it's for everything, it's everything. You're not zoned to be doing that in that area, we get even zoning and building involved with it, you're not even zoned to be doing, what are you doing right there?
Our animal control bylaw speaks about violations relative to kennels and relatives to dogs. The animal control bylaw, where we have offenses written in here, um, about, you know, under the non-criminal disposition forty twenty-one D, um, we have first offense through subsequent offenses up to fifty dollars, and each, um, each day shall be considered a separate offense. So, for the first, the first, next step, there's cease and desist, so the select board issues a cease and desist order for the operation of a kennel without a license. The first day, you continue to operate a kennel without a license, after that, you'd be fined ten dollars, the second day, twenty-five dollars, and every additional day after that, fifty.
Well, can I mention one other thing? So we were actually, her actual cease and desist falls under Mass General Law, and so she actually already received the cease and desist. She received the, under the Mass General Law, the first violation is five hundred dollars now, and every additional day is a thousand dollar violation. And she's been receiving the thousand dollar violation, again, not that I ever expect it to be collected, but it's still, we're, we're following the steps under Mass General Law. So, essentially, what's gonna happen here is, if the board agrees to give the cease and desist for both the kennel and the operation of an animal facility with livestock and animals removed, then what would happen is, if we give her a, a timeframe to do such thing, after that timeframe, we could then apply for, with through the court, for a warrant to remove all animals from the property.
To, to the question, the animal facility, I guess, for the larger animals? I, I think, Chief Percy, you said you're not allowed to run that, on that property, is that, do I hear that? I mean, just why, why can't they, we, she has, does she have the right to run an animal facility at that location?
She's, you're not even gonna lease her.
I'm sorry?
She's not even gonna lease her, right, currently, she never even leased the property, so you have a random person on someone else's property, running animal facility. I think if you are a resident, you're a resident, established, proper fencing, registered everything, you would have that right. But we're at a point where you're not even gonna lease her there.
If I can ask you, Chief, but even if you had the right to have the facility, you have to run it properly, you can't allow it to become nuisance. And if all of your animals were running up and down the street in everybody else's backyard, then it's not being run properly, and it can't be allowed.
It, I just wanted to pull that thread a little bit, and, and I want to go back to the term squatter was used, and then there was replicated, not a squatter, but because you sublet it, you do not have a, assuming you don't have a written lease.
No, no.
By definition, you're a squatter, is that true? So it's not, it's not a derogatory term, it's actually a legal term.
Yes, I, yes.
I have a letter from Attorney Horn saying that, um, the person I rented from did not have permission to rent to me.
Right, so legally, you do not have a right to be on that property, because that person, I think you used the term screwed you.
Yes.
That's why she's planning on leaving on November first, so, yes.
But Attorney Horn has also done the eviction process already too, right?
No, no.
He gave you the first part of the paperwork, and then if you don't leave by that time, they'll have you legally evicted, right?
Notice, it was on the nineteenth of September, she was given until the nineteenth of October. Um, but again, Attorney Horn at the time made statements to us, stating that obviously they had to run the process, which it could drag out a few months. So, originally, she was telling us that she's gonna be homeless on the nineteenth, then it went to, you know, now the first.
Because on Friday, at ten forty-one, I spoke with Arnie, Attorney Horn, and he said he would call me at noon, because whatever, he called me, and I said, may I have till November first to leave? And he said, yes, that's not a problem. He said, Joe NATO, uh, Jao NATO is a nice guy, he's not what everybody thinks he is, and he'll let you stay.
All right, um, we've been through this.
Can I ask, like, how do I get my two dogs, and one of them that has epilepsy back?
So, I do want to mention that currently, she's still not compliant. Um, it again is being sent to court, um, once it goes through court and she becomes compliant, if the court agrees, the dogs will be released to her, but it's still one of those things to where she has unsent her living conditions, she has multiple dogs over the current allowed limit, she's still operating an illegal kennel, and we've still had multiple other occasions of her dogs running free. And the two dogs we have were the, I hate to say, the repeat offenders since May, um, and they're currently being cared for, and they're safe.
And why?
And, uh, and, uh, honestly, it's more for the well-being of the dog, and the safety of our officers. Um, having someone who can't have custody of their animals, visit their animals at the municipal shelter, when there could be either one or none of us, or, you know what I mean, one of us there, or one of us out on a call. We have volunteers, it's a lot to monitor, and then worry about someone. It's just, it's an unnecessary safety caution.
All right, so, uh, that's not the purview of the board at the moment, so I'm gonna leave that responsibility up to animal control. Um, and I'm going to ask for, to, uh, issue a, a motion to immediately cease and desist illegal operation of a kennel in the town of Mendon. I don't know what form or whatever, come do, write something up, um, and we'll issue that.
Happen in, like, twenty-four hours, does?
So move to that motion.
And now, second, do you want to do animal facility too, or is that maybe a separate one?
Maybe it'll be a second.
I'm gonna, yeah, do a separate one. Um, so, uh, the discussion on this would then be, uh, do it, uh, so, I, I said immediately, and so that means immediately. Um, and, uh, you know, I would work with the police chief to just do your best to resolve this situation as fast as possible, because it doesn't seem like that's been going on, so that's my part of the discussion, this is not a part for you to talk. Um, so, can I just, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to get a vote.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
All those in favor? Uh, all those against? All right, and so I would like to, uh, have a second motion to, uh, immediately cease and desist the, uh, animal operation at the facilities in the town of Mendon.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Safety hazard.
Want the motion to save the nuisance, or do you want to remove nuisance in there at all, or just?
Is nuisance legally required, or is that something that triggers something to happen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what part of the bylaws you all get to say is, stop having an animal facility. Um, it's not clear to me here, I know there's the criminal way that the chief can, I'm not sure what authority the board has.
Just my, my memory of it, the past is, it's been, it's been channeled through the board of health, because that's where the, I mean, we're, you know, we're right to fire community, but you're not, you can't have a fire if, if you don't take care of the animals and make a sanitary.
You're supposed to be on the property.
Right, yeah, oh, right, 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 farm, right, farm means.
So can we, can we say, uh, you know?
Public safety, for the safety of the residents, also, it's, I mean, although border health will chime in with the health concerns.
I know it seems kind of redundant to have a cease and desist when, when, you know, you, you break a myriad laws.
I mean, just what I heard was it's in support of the case, um.
Right.
And I tell you, liability-wise, so if a cow gets outside and someone dies.
We're recognizing this, this is a hazard.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, I, you can, of course, issue the cease and desist, I'm not, I'm not sure what lever will do that.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's gonna be through the board.
So a referral to the board, a referral to the board of health to issue a cease and desist.
All right, so, uh, I would change, uh, that motion then, um, to be a referral to the board of health to issue an immediate cease and desist for the operation uh, of an animal facility, um, due to the nuisance that's being caused, and the value to comply with regulations around that facility. I think that's enough.
Second.
Now, discussion?
Yes, really, so, we're referring something to the board of health, the kennel law we have purview over, we're good on that one. How do we expedite that for the health?
I'll be back tomorrow morning, we'll probably have a meeting early next week.
This can, or maybe we might need a special meeting, given the. This can, or maybe we might need a special meeting given the concern I'm hearing from public safety about that cow might get out tonight. I would try to expedite it.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those against? So I apologize to all of you for having to, uh, deal with this in such a public manner. Unfortunately, this stuff happens, so thank you for your due diligence, Corporal. Sir, thank you as well for speaking up. And Animal Control, I know you deal with this all the time and this is a lot of work. And I apologize, uh, in advance if, you know, your feelings got hurt around how you speak or talk or work. Just, just be cognizant of how difficult this situation is sometimes and, you know, do your best to stay calm.
Well, I, I will mention that in nineteen years as Animal Control, I have never, ever, ever spoken to any resident in that manner.
Okay.
And have no intention of.
All right, well, we appreciate your time. I know it's hard stuff.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your, uh, looking out for the well-being of the animals as well. I know this is no, many issues here, but I know that you're looking out for those animals.
And your documentation game is real strong, so good job.
On the, on the documentation question, can you find out about the dog licenses just because there was like?
The dog was, were a hundred percent acquired while the dog was in our care.
Right, so I mean, I think, I think that's, you know, I think documentation is helpful for this to like, that, that should be. I think it's not even public record when the dogs are licensed.
Sure.
I can email Ellen tonight and I'll patch the town administrator number one on it and they can supply the, um, dog licenses on date of purchase. And you'll see that it aligns with, we have the dogs.
So maybe if Chief could also give a heads up to Oxford Chief. Yeah, you also give a heads up to Oxford Chief about what we just discussed here, just so he's aware in case some information comes his way. Um, and then like, yeah, let us know how we can support.
The three of us are, four of us are in constant contact. I'll keep the town administrator. Um, I talked to him on a daily basis. I'll keep him updated and he'll do anything to you, but at this point, we're just going forward, we're just twenty-nine calls is more than enough, like.
Yeah.
We tried to work with someone, I, I, I don't think anybody said we didn't. Kevin tried to work with him. Right at the point, you just, we have no choice.
Get Joyce Gilmore and take her. And I will mention, um, honestly, I, I, I have never gone over there alone. Um, that was actually a recommendation from MSPCA and Kent Animal Control. And from the day we went there with, uh, the Department of Ag and from the day we went there with, um, MSPCA, they've been nothing but pleasant with us. We've all gone along and at no point did I ask someone where they got their money. Uh, we were trying to have a heart-to-heart about the financial expense of caring for the animals and whether or not it was actually needed. Um, with what, everything they're also dealing with. It was just trying to get down to a level of, you know, this is gonna cost an awful lot of money for unnecessary steps. Maybe you're putting the cart before the horse. It was a very simple conversation of an ACO Ben was present for that. Uh, it was, I never asked anyone about finances, ever.
We're, we're very lucky to have Kevin, he's done a great job for us for the years. Um, just, and we told you a little bit too, but I think a little bit more is gonna be put on us. Um, like everything else, the past five years, it was about, from clinicians to social workers, we do. So pretty soon, pretty soon we'll be putting the ACs for you on, on a daily basis.
There is amended police department, put a horse there to take.
Um, what do you live?
Um, we used to have, we used to, do we still have field drivers? Does that position exist anymore?
Cause we got them pound on Providence.
Well, but there were, uh, farmers.
Yeah.
Who would be appointed by the select board as field drivers. And their job was to capture loose livestock.
That's us now.
And take them in custody and, and, and there was arrangements. There were farms in town. And everybody, usually when they got loose, they were close to a facility that they could be held in if there wasn't back to the farm. And, and I can remember walking down Cemetery Street with two horses. Yeah, Brian and.
Yeah, you said they went on George Street.
Already has to go. You know.
Like the one time we did the emo, but that didn't work out. I didn't want to ever try to last an emo.
But the difference was people, people. They were responsible with the horses and they, you know, they, they, they really did just inadvertently get out. You know, it wasn't unsanitary and.
Yeah, I mean, accidents happen, they're animals.
Right, exactly.
You know what I mean? Like, that's why we're here. That's what we deal with on a daily day. It's just at some point we had.
This is exceptional.
Like, or like I have in my, all of my years, I've never had a situation like this.
I've never seen, I've been there thirty years, so. Then this PC, would they take these animals?
Yes, they are.
They still would do that at least. They don't do the investigations anymore.
That's what we used to have.
Yeah, I mean, there was a time when they would do the investigations on, like, Prime and Providence Road.
Sure.
All the chickens and ducks that I found when I was a detective. I called them and they took over the whole investigation. We had hundreds and hundreds. And Kevin knew it for that too, hundreds. I remember pulling up and one, like dead ones everywhere. But they came in, they took over the scene, you know. All right, so I, we gotta move on because it's nine thirty. Wait, Chief, don't go anywhere because we're gonna accept donations for amended police department. I know it's inflationary. Um, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll come see you before you leave.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, so number fourteen. It sounds weird sometimes.
Yeah.
Um, we are looking to, uh, accept, uh, a donation of three hundred dollars uh, from Melanie Smart. This was something that, um, this is a, a correction or like, uh, more information on a previous donation. Is that true?
So we had, we had not accepted the donation. It was set up a, a account from the meetings ago.
Right.
And then we're getting clarity on it. So we hadn't accepted it at that point and now.
So, um, it was a donation, donation we received that, the whole reason we started this account. Uh, we do property checks and we've helped out the family here and there and they just wanted to send in some gratitude, um, to help out the department. And when I got the card, that just made me think of, you know, all these donations we usually get that we turn down. Um, you know, it'd be a good idea to start accepting them and then when we do something like buy D FIP, you know, for the police station or the fire station. Um, yeah, we, we donated, you know, say these are the people who donated towards that and you can put their name on a little plaque or something, you know. I think it's, um, a good way of people giving back to the community and then seeing where it goes. And that's why we set this account, so.
Is, are there any conditions on the donation or is it?
Just a donation, so. Right, right, uh, you know, whatever we see fit and I think we, uh, discussed, I, I'm gonna do a policy through accreditation. Um, so it lives on beyond me and then we, we come to you with it, whatever we want to spend it. And, uh, also get your approval there to say what we're gonna use it for. So I just think it's a good way of, all these years that people wanted to donate and we always said, no, I think it's a good thing to do. Um, community-wise, because people want to help out.
All right, motion me. It's gotcha. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those against? All right, thanks, Chief.
The night or can I go watch it next door?
You're all set.
I'll be watching you next door.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Uh, uh, all right, uh, this is a special town meeting, finalizing the warrant. Oh, shoot, hi. Man, something just happened and I forgot. Let's, uh, go back to the personnel policy and just have a little discussion about that. Uh, which is number ten.
So, yeah, I'll give a little introduction. Um, so, so, you'll, you start from there. Um, the amended personnel policy, which, um, is referred, I just want to make sure we know where this situation is. We've got non-union and union folks in town. Um, and pretty much all conditions of union employment is covered under collective bargaining agreements. There are portions of the collective bargaining agreement that says consistent with the town's personnel policy. Whether it's how you get paid weekly or monthly, bi-weekly, direct deposit, bereavement leave, whatever it is, longevity. It's not, we have four types of bargaining agreements, it's not equal. Some have their own longevity, it matches the personnel policy, but some are perfect. And there are folk, um, who have individual contracts that the board talks about, votes on, signs. Um, and then there are some other folks, um, who were working to admit this, but, um, just have initial employment agreements and then have no actual terms of their employment, uh, besides within the personnel policy. So the whole book governs, um, their employment with the town is personnel policy. So this document applies to those pieces that get caught in the, um, collective bargaining rooms and also in things like my individual contract and others that says consistent with the personnel policy, similar to how the collective bargaining works. So, um, it's, it's those everywhere and then for folks who don't have any other additional terms, it captures everything. Um, that's on the term appointment. There's also some things in here and like, you know, proper work attire and stuff like that, that apply to everyone where the collective bargaining agreement would, where you can, employees can park in town, all sorts of stuff. Um, that applies regardless of what your collective bargaining says. So this was last revised in August twenty thirteen. Um, and.
It was just last year.
And, um, it was on my desk, um, with a note on it that said twenty nineteen and like pen marks on it. Uh, but that never got.
That was on my desk too when I started as well.
So that never got, um.
Uh, it was never ratified.
Integrated.
It just sort of stayed marked up and became a policy.
I was told that due to COVID, it got tabled and then on the first day I started, it was on my desk and said, here you go, have at it.
So it did, so we've included both here. I know red line is how we like to do stuff, but I think it was, it was a lot different in a lot of ways. So we, we just included both. What we wanted to do here though was highlight some of the major revisions. So first, uh, Jen did the lion's share of the work to begin with, uh, sent it to Labor Council and then her and I went through line by line with some revisions and that's how we got here. Um, so some changes to, um, uh, what was last approved in twenty thirteen. So vacation policy, a lot of this is in collective bargaining, um, and they're all gonna hear this next week or two, so this is a going to be proposal to town. Um, right now, vacation is capped at however much you can accrue in one year. That's how much you can roll over. We've talked about that before. Um, that's a lot, um, and that, um, creates a big long-term liability for the town. Um, and it is uncommon in the job market rate large, but even in, uh, public sector in Massachusetts, um, having rolled five weeks vacation. So, um, we took a more conservative approach at eighty hours. Beginning in fiscal twenty-eight, um, and it's explicit in the policy because we began it in fiscal twenty-seven. You have folks who rolled over a lot from fiscal twenty-five and then that would be kind of too much for them to have to burn by June thirtieth this year. So we wanted to give folks, um, enough time to reasonably use their vacation. Uh, sick leave policy, so, um, right now, uh, some individual contracts and the personnel policy accrues sick time at ten hours per month, which is a hundred and fifty hours per year. Or a hundred, a hundred and twenty hours per year, sorry. That is, uh, three weeks. Um, all the collective bargaining agreements were revised for July twenty fifteen to instead accrue at eight hours per month.
Except fire.
Fire is a little bit different because they work twenty-four hour shifts. So the people who work eight hour shifts was, I mean, was right down to accrue at eight hours per week or eight hours per month. All right, so I think it's fair that we, my contract I signed says ten hours, so whenever I redo my new one, I'll make it same.
Wasn't that because the, for a while, the, the police were working four, ten-hour days, uh, dug forward to?
Uh, I don't know the genesis of it.
Either way, it's, it's, it's gonna be eight hour accrual now.
And that's how it is for fire exempted. It is for the three other unions who work more typical schedules. Um, and it has been in some individual contracts, so we just want to make that, um, uniform. Um, and explicitly say that part-time employees are allowed to be free based on the Massachusetts sick leave law. Um, previously, personal time, if you had started on June twenty-fifth, we gave you three personal days that you had to use by June thirtieth. That did not carry over and we did not pay you out for it. Um, so people were incentivized to take much time all at once, um, depending on when. So this takes what is, I imagine, standard in most of your workplaces where it prorates it based upon your start date. Uh, bereavement leave, if we've got four different contracts and maybe ten or collective bargaining agreements, maybe ten or so, um, individual contracts, we probably have nine different ways that we define bereavement leave. Probably three or four ways that we define what immediate family is. Um, so this is the one part of the policy that hasn't been finished yet because it's a big matrix and involves bargaining too. Um, it's not the most important part of the policy, so we wanted to get it over to you. Um, uh, but we want to standardize that. In some cases, it's super, super generous. Um, five days for step-grandchild or something like that, and then another ones, it's like three days for a parent. Um, it just, it, it doesn't make sense.
My company's three days, so it's like everybody's, but I'm surprised by the definition of immediate family.
Every, every contract had it different, so we think that when they were bargaining, somebody had.
Someone had a step-grandchild.
A step-grandchild or a step-nephew or something.
Like nieces, nephews, being immediate families.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say the last, uh, bargaining agreement I was at, I, I didn't want to make a distinction between a stepchild and a child.
I, I don't think there should be a distinction between a child as a child, um, but I also don't think that you should get two weeks for your nephew and, you know, three days for your spouse.
Yeah, yeah.
Depending on what unit you're in, that's not like one. So we're, we're looking, we're looking to standardize them, um, in a, again, in a name and, and market.
Reasonable way.
Yeah, it's.
And you can, and, and what I have been trying to tell people is we're paying you for three days. You can still take more time. You can use other leave options. So it's not like we're saying.
Crude vacation.
Your vacation, exactly, your, your, um, personal time. We're not saying you can't have two weeks off. We're just saying we'll, we'll pay you that portion in bereavement leave.
So are you gonna say that part out loud to just so like?
Yeah.
Something we have to codify so that people are aware that's the culture here.
Yeah, that should be in the policy.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, holiday pay, this is one that's been applied in equal, not equally across the town and across years. So we wanted to run the writing. So, you know, if you're scheduled to work on a Thursday at the library and you work eight hours a week and four of them are on that Thursday and it's Thanksgiving, we'll still pay you the four hours for that holiday. Um, that's how we budget. We don't go through and truncate for people's holiday. We put it in the budget.
And what's up, what some employees were having to do is make up four hours, even if they wanted to stay whole for their eight hours during the week, they'd have to try to find four additional hours they could do during the week.
It doesn't make sense if you're basing your life on that salary and you're not getting any other benefits for us to.
Right, and.
And it's re, it's really short money for the, for the year.
And we have so few really part-time employees that, that this would.
I think it's.
Impact.
Um, so there's no, there's no vote here. One, one because the brevity post. Uh, and two, because it's like, you know, a hundred and whatever page document we sent to you a couple of days ago. Um, so this is, um.
It wasn't a lot to read, I was screaming.
Well, thankfully, like sixty, like. There's three of them through the same thing, there are three separate applications.
Is that, is that okay? Yeah.
Yeah. That wasn't a mistake, that was actually with the application. Um. Yeah. Um, so just take it in, um.
And if you have any suggestions or, or comments or concerns or something you don't see in there. Let us know. Get it in enough detail. No, that's, that's fine. I have.
Yeah, can you send?
Yeah, actually, it would be nice if you forgot. It's in this really long PDF, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's just.
I sent you the word version.
And then that's got attached and then that got put in the.
Oh, okay.
You've been talking about this since.
Yeah.
We first got on the findings.
Yes, it's, and it's, let's just say that I. I'm now wearing glasses because I've been looking. You're like, oh, she's in disguise. But I think, I just, I really think that it's, it's important that, that we get this out there to the employees and, and let them know too that we're, we're not really taking, we're not trying to take things away from them. What we're trying to do is, is make things uniform because they really, they really weren't fair enough, right?
How did you apply?
Uh, you should see the, this, the stick accruals are all over the place, the, yeah. Oh, yeah, you know, I've looked at them.
Right.
Yeah.
When you first came in, remember, I was there that day when it was on your.
Yeah.
We said, we gotta deal with this.
Yep, and the, yeah, and the vacation, the vacation policy too, and I.
That's a huge life.
I reached out to a lot of, um, a lot of HR counterparts and, I mean, when they heard what our policy was, they were shocked that we were allowing people to carry five weeks over. Um, it, it went everywhere from, you know, use it or lose it to, you know, they could carry, I think eighty or two weeks was about the, the standard.
And that's, that's one thing, it wasn't highlighted in here, but it's one thing that this policy and that my red pen and my binder of contracts is that defining something as a day, um, unless you define what a day means, is not helpful to us or weak.
Yeah.
Right, defining everything in hours.
Makes sense, yeah.
What do we have that, some issues? So.
Yeah, so because some people work ten hours, some people work eight hours, some people work six hours. So we're doing everything in hours and I really do think that's gonna make things a lot easier and, and I say this a lot to people is I'm not always gonna be sitting in that seat, so I just want to make sure that what is, you know, in my mind, I know how to apply things. If you move in my office, no. Um, but. I keep saying, I'll move to the closet next door if I need to. Um, but I know what, I know in my mind how to apply things. Like when they come across my desk, I know, oh, that's right, I have to do this for this person. But it's, if it's in writing, it'll be some things here.
In return to this collective bargaining, is there a party you want us to review, approve and make, modify this by?
Um, I've been here too. I've been here too.
It doesn't come plus years and it hasn't happened yet, so I think we can wait a few weeks.
Well, but like saying, like, if it's, if it's important in negotiations, we can prioritize it on an agenda, get it done. Only if you have time to do that and it's.
Yeah, I would say in December, we're not gonna have any contracts together in December.
By year end, we should have this wrapped up.
Right, so deadlines are helpful to me to actually like. You know, put it on my to-do list to read it like, okay, today I'm gonna read it.
Not that it's super important, but I am taking the last two weeks of December off, so basically.
So mid-December, sorry.
Mid-December, here.
We don't usually meet.
Around Christmas.
Around Christmas.
Yeah.
So.
And then from a bargaining perspective, typically, I only signed one of these, but typically ground rules for negotiations. Say your first meeting is to set ground rules and then we're allowed to propose new proposals up until the second meeting after ground. So by the time we get to our third total meeting, is when we can do new proposals. So if it seems like we're butting up against one of those meetings. And I want to make sure that whatever our new proposal comports with some yet to be. Ratified version in the policy, we'll have a quick executive session at the end of the meeting, say, hey, I'm doing this bargaining wise. Is that where your head's at policy-wise?
What um. Like, how is staff gonna be involved? So the bargaining, but like, I mean, how is, like, how are the other um. Employees gonna learn about this? Have you, like, is this gonna be part of, like, the meeting with?
Yeah, so I've, I've been having my monthly department head meetings. So as you all know, the department head meetings here, that's most people, right? And I don't mean all departments together, I mean one-on-ones. So I think I've said it to everyone, I think it was in my last months. That this is something that we're reviewing and revising and have been previewing some of the changes. We haven't had staff input yet. And.
If you could watch the this meeting.
I'm wondering about like, yeah, the memo, like.
Yeah, I think circulating its staff would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, wrecked up, built up rather than top-down. And then, oh, shoot, I forgot my second point on that. It was an acknowledgement page.
Yeah, there's, there's an acknowledgement page and the, I'm working with our payroll provider. They actually have a portal that we can do everything. On online onboarding, but we could send this out to all current employees through that portal so that they could read it and then I would know. When they opened, they opened it and when they signed the page. And also I can set it up that they would get an email reminder. Every three days. And then if they don't sign it, it's gonna be every three minutes. To, to, you know, to make sure that they, to make sure that they. Yeah, but I I just think it's important that they at least acknowledge, I.
Yeah.
Acknowledge that they know that they're the new personnel policy, whether they read it or not, it's, I can't, unless I sit with them.
Think they're gonna keep carrying over all of this.
Right.
Yeah, I guess especially employees that, I don't know how many employees that would apply to you, right there. This would be employees who've been here for a number.
Well, we ran into a bit of an issue because we, part of a project I started with Mike, when I first started was to find out. Who was over the cap of their vacation and we figured that all out finally. Once Jeremy was in place, on day one, when I went to him and said, hey, we have to take care of this, it was like, okay, let's, let me. Now find the pens first. But we finally were able to determine who was over and. We had to take the vacation away from them because it states it in the personnel policy and it also states it in their collective bargaining agreements. So there was some pushback to Jeremy. And unfortunately, it it's in the policy, so we we had to do that. So I'm not sure how this is gonna go over.
We also, if it's not in there, it's something that we, Jen and I dealt with earlier today. So that's the first time it came up about being explicit on. Personal time and sick time not being paid out at separation. In some places it is. And in other places it says we'll pay you up for your accrued vacation leave and then it's silent on personnel or personal or just sick leaves. Then we rely on past practice. So make sure, make making sure that's.
Yeah, everybody should be.
So individual contracts now have, you are, you are paid out for your vacation, accrued vacation time. And it explicitly says there you are not paid out for your sick time. It says it all in the individual contracts. Except for one right now. But all the collective bargaining agreements, it's not explicit that they're not paid out for their sick time. But it doesn't say you're paid out for your leave either. It does explicitly say you're paid out for vacation, so.
Which we're required to do in.
Yes.
And I was recently enlightened that we are not allowed to withhold final payments, not on wages, but we're not allowed to withhold final payments. Of vacation or accrued leave that we are paying out, even in the event where an employee doesn't return all the property that we. That they are using, we still have to pay them out through their, their vacation leave, which is not the way. Through my previous. I was originally told we weren't allowed to do that, so.
There's something called the Wage Act that we can't violate.
But so so that's what we got. We'll also circulate the memo which shows the highlights and personnel policy to. Everyone, I think that's useful, provide some more context too. And yeah, if we can just keep. I'll talk to the chair before the next agenda.
If we've got edited questions, just.
Yeah, and and also I think too, what I'd like to see going forward and I know that this is maybe a wish. Is that if we do update the policies that we. You know, send out the revised policy to employees and have them sign an acknowledgement that they received that as well because there were a lot of revisions. In the policy that I was reading and I don't know if.
If there was that.
It was what the communication was. Weird, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
I.
Sorry, keep you here all night.
That's okay. I have boot camp tomorrow morning, so I won't go do that.
Move away. I went to it last year.
I'll be in Sharon tomorrow. And then I'll be back for.
Number eighteen, finalize special town meeting warrant.
So this actually should be quick in that there's nothing really. So those are prior, and so what? Just worked with town council to make sure of the. All of these. Those are prior year. And again, to folks listening, this is, the article is not the motion, so it's not going to have. X dollar amount from X source. We'll hit that in a second. So incorporation to stabilization, capital expenditure, other post-employment benefits trust. Fire department vehicle leases. NGL one thirty-eight twenty-one D, just combining those onsite consumption licenses. These are zoning bylaw changes, which I just want to call out town planner Dylan Lindholm, who's been working with town council the past couple of weeks on these. I worked with town council today on something else and council particularly called out Dylan's work about how. How great it's been to have someone full-time working on these and operating a job. They've done on it. So I sent that along to Dylan, but I wanted to say it to you all.
Thank you, Dylan.
So we have ones cleaning up the flood hazard overlay, table of use changes. When it says attached documentation, I'll get that in a second. And more table of use, open space communities and site plan review. This is the sign bylaw that we've been talking about a couple of times, which. Council and I have asked the zoning enforcement officer to use professional judgment to not enforce. Accessory dwelling unit. If I haven't said it here, if I just said it to Brendan, the parts that were accepted by the AG are incorporated into our bylaws, the parts that aren't, so this is fixing that up. Interestingly, town of Milford went the opposite way and just said, we're not gonna put anything in our bylaws until it's all right. So they just default to the state stuff and have none of the local control over it. So I'm glad we went through how we did. Yeah. Common driveways and retreat lots or flag lots or fork chuck lots or people lack of frontage otherwise required. This is just cleaning it up. It's it's messy to read sometimes. I initially had an article in here about re-authorizing of fund for the trackless and dump truck. And then after discussion here, split it up into two. So closing the fund back to stabilization and then. Opening a fund for the purchase of a dump truck related to highway and grounds operations. This is number seventeen from the Board of Health about the increased wells needed for monitoring, which we talked about at length. Eighteen, recommended by, all the ones in here are recommended by the capital planning committee and have been discussed with the finance committee and finance committee is meeting for a second time. On Monday with myself and some of the department heads to go over their recommendations. Climate control system for up here, mini splits, you have it designed and installed and then repair the one that's next door. Merge to well repair at the senior center, mapping software for the assessors office, matching grant for a state, matching funds for a state grant. An additional appropriation for Providence Street Culver to offset future costs. Continue to fund fire turnout gear replacement program. Fire equipment in terms of a boat, trailer and a UTV, which chief has pictures of that will share. It's a side-by-side John Deere Gator looking thing, kind of beefed up. Trailer is with hauls water. Highway department backup, their number one priority. Design engineering costs related to Mended Town Beach and Memorial Park subject system. I think we're going to strike this one or pass over this one. CPA voted, just voted to kind of table that until future years. Yeah, I, I really didn't want to go through and renumber the report that I wrote already and redo this page. So Dan told me this morning, they're probably gonna pass it over. I have it still in here.
We, we passed it over, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't realize that until after this. It was already kind of put together. This one twenty-eight, Amy and I are meeting on Monday to kind of go over the specifics, but the back egress to the senior center is no longer usable. Closing accounts, doing a boundary plan, closing a bunch of accounts and closing the back out to where they, where they were funded from. Additional road repair, Community Preservation Act changes. Gender neutral and animal control that the general bylaw review committee talks about. So this is the fun little part. So this is gonna be printed and put in the library and post office and town hall and then mailed to everybody next week. So we've set up this.
You gotta show them.
Jeremy, the capital planning didn't. Look at the fire station anal, needs analysis. Isn't that?
No, it's not.
When you say that the fire department needs analysis is done?
No, it was not, was not, was not prioritized to be funded, yes. So I guess I have to, I have to fix that. Our our short link didn't work, so fix that. But here we'll have all of the redlined bylaw changes and then.
You can't say. Does it work? They control.
It's what, yeah, so. It re, it does not redirect correctly, so I have to change that before we go up.
Redirecting to a local disk.
Yeah.
That's unfortunate. So when I do get it, when I get it correctly, we'll have, you know. I did like a lot this morning.
It worked on your computer. It doesn't work on anyone else.
But.
But this is really great that the, and if people are gonna have access.
Big step off.
QR codes, like, yeah, they're so much more likely to go check out this documentation because it's so easy to access.
Agreed.
And and I think it's a really great compromise with like having the paper warrant, but not sending out like a whole like magazine. You know.
Cheaper too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So that's where everything will be. And once I fix that, so that that is the, that is the warrant. I have the fancy paper here for you to sign and the.
Sorry, is this where the the QR code will lead?
Yeah. And so. At the town clerk's suggestion from years past, the signature page is down here. So you can all sign it tonight and then I can fix the, the code and we can go out in one cohesive document that has to correct.
That was a great suggestion by the. She's done this before.
Yeah, it seems like that. So just go to to finalize the warrant.
All right, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the finalized warrant for the special time meeting November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Yes, sir.
Sorry, one thing before we go on, the numbering, since that's being passed over, is this the warrant with the numbering?
And we're just, he's gonna keep it or pass it over.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Chris, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion? Maybe. Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those against? Motion passes. Town administrator's report.
Actually, Jeremy, on the splits for town hall, did, I brought that up CPA meeting. Dan was aware of it and. Have you talked to anybody that didn't talk to you about CPA?
No, I have a standing meeting with Dan.
Is he the one that, yeah, CPA can be used for preservation? For climate control. So I think we should pursue that.
In this room, where would you put the mini splits? So most likely they'll put it, like, if they can't figure out a open space to put it, they're gonna put floor units in.
They'll have to put it like over the windows.
They either have to go over the window or there are units or cassettes that can go into the wall or the units that go on the ground. I I have one ground unit in my house, so.
I asked Dan about that. He said since we already had it, he didn't think so.
Yeah, but you're changing it. They're generally supportive of mini splits.
No, I know. I'm just saying more of a cursory, I wouldn't.
Rather than talk to one member, talk to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Makes you store the building as livable. Funded as well through CPA, then store bucket.
I like that curve. Gives a character.
What's under there?
Don't carry it.
Well, there's a bowling alley upstairs.
I thought there was a pool up there.
The pool's on the roof. All right, Mr. Town Administrator.
All right, so again, I feel like I've talked a lot of things. I'm not gonna go through a ton of stuff. Start negotiations, have negotiations again Friday with fire and then police next week and highway after that. I tried to only schedule one week because they take up an entire day, usually between prep and debrief and how to do something. Recently went to a DLS conference in Worcester, which was really, really impactful from like a planning point of view and what sort of tools. Both kind of state and fed you can use for infrastructure. Which, at least that station I went to, was tied in nicely with the project that we're receiving grant funding on now, Providence Street Culver. For three hundred thousand of our own money, sworn ask for another hundred thousand dollars. We've got about two hundred thousand dollars with the grants, about six hundred thousand dollars there. And then we're looking at DOT phase two for small bridge repair program, which in the past. Three or four years that's been a program, it's been funded a half a million dollars as a maximum applicant award. And then we got confirmation earlier this week that the maximum war is this year is a million dollars. Not that, you know, it might get seven twenty-five, we might not even get five hundred, you know, we're not there, but we have a strong application. And we got the maximum amount for phase one, which was engineering. So I'm, I'm confident we will get a pretty big chunk from that. But my, my approach is going to be still, when we get to annual town meeting. Take our estimated project, estimated project cost. Plus our whatever contingency if it's already built in, less our committed funding and then ask for the balance in a debt authorization. Just because we can't, we can't execute a contract if we don't have the funding in place behind it. So. My goal would be to ask for debt authorization and then come back in the fall and say, hey, we can rescind eighty-five percent of that debt authorization or something, but. We'll need to ask for a bigger number.
So we talk about earmarks and things. We've got, you know, Brian Murray and several, you know, we get in their ears and say, so we want to do. Is with these DOT programs, does it behoove us at all to engage with our legislatures to have them? Do, could they have any influence in this process for us?
What I would suggest, those, like you said, there's a million dollar cap, those. That's something Brian Murray sees to be particularly effective. Just letting him know about any of those. And he was particularly frustrated because he would try to have those conversations with the ingredients down straight and there was a disconnect. So I would just encourage you to.
I've had, I've had both ends with legislators where they say like, you know, anything I can do to help you and I have no idea what goes on. But then other folks who say that's an executive branch kind of qualifications-based grant, I don't want. But then other folks who say that's an executive branch kind of qualifications-based grant, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get involved in that, in that selection program. So I, I've had both, so if you think it would be effective, then certainly, um.
I just don't know what to say. I mean, he's, he's, it's a good idea to ask.
Um, so that, that's been my, um, between, between labor and that grant, um, and conference, and, you know, continuing to go. I think these one-on-one meetings, department head, it's definitely, um, just, um, touch base on a really regular basis. Um, and I recently submitted, um, I've kind of cleaned up bylaw changes to general bylaw review committee, um, and we'll have some more substantive ones that I'll bring here first to talk about. Uh, that's all I got.
All right, so future agenda items, the plan of inventory at land, which touched on that last time. Uh, the fee structure, uh, and the bylaw, which is something that's been talked about, will come to us very soon. Uh, and then parks commissioner appointment, we, uh, we're working on that still. Uh, and, uh, I just add a couple of things, uh, the, uh, Connect three fifty-one conference is in January. If you're going, please, uh, have Katie sign you up. And, uh, and then the final thing would be for the, uh, town administrator, um, it's holiday season. Uh, I think the board, uh, would, would still like to do a, another, uh, celebration for the committees and boards in the town. Uh, I think that has been received quite well the last couple of years. I think we should continue it. I just don't want it to be a stressful thing that you have to organize or Katie has to organize five minutes before. So it's closing in on the, on November. If somebody could give them a call.
I think, yeah, I think, yeah, getting a date on the calendar earlier is great, cause I know.
Yeah, I think that was trouble last time is also getting a date, cause it was getting close to, to Christmas.
And if you could have it be one without a snowstorm.
That's pretty.
Yeah.
We wanna mix it up and, and, and see if we can go to like Willowbrook or Steakhouse.
I'm willing to go anywhere inside of Menden.
I think that's a good idea, too.
There's a, there's a function room at Vanderbilt.
Well, just pull.
I wonder if there is.
Um, so that being said, uh, if there's any other additional topics for our upcoming meetings, please let us know. We will try not to make the next one so difficult and long. Uh, well, some of this stuff just couldn't wait, so just what happens sometimes. Um, and then, uh, next meeting is November fifth, November twelfth is our special town meeting, then November nineteenth. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. All those against? All right, closing the meeting at ten to three PM. Have a great night, everybody who's watching, the signing.
Yeah, we've got a couple of things you guys to sign.
Um, I was like, I'm still stopping. There you go.
So if you remember the last.